Yeah.
I want to call the meeting of the Penn Township Board of Supervisors Wednesday, April 29, 2015 to order. We'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment. Silence.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Chairman Holman is not present tonight due to the death in his family. Moving to recognition of visitors, is Megan Thorpe present?
Yep. Hi. I'm with the Senator's office and Senator Tapletz has been into the area, so he's asked that I go around all the townships in the boroughs and just introduce myself to all the council members and supervisors and everybody else that's involved in the county meetings. I'll just tell you a little bit about myself and about what we can do for you guys and then I'll get out of your hair. Again, my name's Megan and I actually grew up here. I'm from Wheatfield Township, but I played softball for Dagsa for 15 years. I can remember going to preschool in this building. I hunt, I fish, I do wild mushrooms, I pick strawberries, raspberries, the whole gamut. So if I'm not in the office, I'm probably outside all night, especially starting this month because turkey's coming in. So the only time I'm actually not in the office for Senator Tapletz is first two weeks of December. I take my vacation in December and I go deer hunting, so I won't be in the office those two weeks, but any other time you can find me in New Bluefield. The Senator's office, we have the main office, it's in the Bluefield and it's Senator Corman's old office. It's across the street, well, it's caty corner from the pork house and it's across the street from Representative Keller's office. We're right by the barber shop, so we're really easy to find. I also do satellite offices out in Millers Town and I do another one out in Jackson Township towards Blaine. There's a lot of different stuff that we do for townships and municipalities. We can do grant support for grants, any grants that you're interested in. We also have information on different grants that are available. I know we're working with Center Township right now on a recreation grant and Millers Town is looking for a recreation grant. We also had a meeting today with an economic development group that is working on the business campus that's right here where Lots of Balls is, trying to find more funding for that with Commissioner Rudy and Richard Pluta and a whole bunch of Jim Fuller, I'm sure you know Jim, the Farm Bureau. We can do all that kinds of stuff. We also do constituent services for people, so if anyone needs help with unemployment compensation, with different human services benefits that come through the state, pretty much anything, oh my, sorry.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Pretty much anything that deals with the state. If you have a problem, if you have a question, if you're just not sure, or if you want some support from us, our office is here and I can help with that. If I can't help it, I can point you in the right direction to who can help you. I'm going to leave my cards here, just in case anyone wants them, but you can find our contact information, or maybe I won't. Never mind. Our contact information is online. If you want it, there's a website that we have. We also have Facebook, we do all kinds of social media. We do local events, too. We recently did a Shrider event. This week, we're having a senior fair. We do all kinds of different stuff with the public, so if you ever need anything, give me a call. That's all.
Thank you, Megan.
Thanks for giving me a couple minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Lee.
I was Saturday. We were in New Bluefield, I had the occasion to walk around the square.
Mr. Banner, I believe you're next.
And Mr. Banner, I have a thing to do.
That's the plan.
What's the situation with the senior citizens and the Medicaid of telling their homes when they're in emergency?
Do you mean help to break that?
I was wondering just quite how involved you would be in that or what you...
Yeah, someone needs help with their Medicare or any kind of services. We also do Medicaid, which is energy, health from the state, therapy for your gas, if you need to do all kinds of stuff, so I don't want to get into particulars, but if you have a problem, call me and I'll make sure someone helps.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for giving me a couple minutes.
Oh, okay, yes.
Thank you.
Now, Mr. Banner.
Okay. I'm Bob Banner. I live out at 19 Rook Road. We're having that controversy over the continuation of the road up over the hill to subdivide Randy's lot, the old airport up there. All right, from what I can gather, the farm was farmed by the Carnes family, two grandparents and grandchildren. Later, it passed on to Floyd Taylor, who sold the old farmhouse to Mary Rook. She added a back porch to that old farmhouse, in which Floyd Taylor told me that that is where the right-of-way ran. And that if he was going to enforce that right-of-way, he'd have to move her back porch. He sold a lot to me after that. And the township added the restrictions that I purchased, an extra one acre, which covered 100 feet up in front of Mary Rook's old farmhouse. They said that he had to have at least 100 foot running to that property in order to sell it. The dirt road, the farm tractor road, went around Mary Rook's house, which is now a hill, and stopped at the barn. It didn't continue any further than that, other than tire tracks up over the hill for the track. Floyd moved the lane over so that the Rooks and myself would not have a problem when and if the township decided to turn the corner and go up over the road, up over the hill there. The township chose not to go around the corner. They stopped at the end of my driveway. For 40 years, I've lived there. I've put in drainage ditches, I've filled the junk away, I mowed the grass. There was an old shed sitting, implement shed and corn crib, sitting up the road where Stoner quickly removed and said that was now the road up the hill. He cut in a mud lane up over the hill, throwed a little bit of stones at it, and then the mud continued to come down over there and down my driveway. It followed my driveway the whole way into my house. I had to have the driveway completely redone. I talked to Stoner about that and said I was going to go to the township and complain. He asked me not to go to the township. He was a supervisor at the time. It would make him more pay. After Stoner sold off those two lots to Smith and Oak, which is now Sanderson's house, A. K. Hineby, I learned that those homes were required to maintain that road that was currently in there, indicating the road that was already there, not one that would be put in 12 to 15 years later. I wanted to remind the board about adverse possession. The legal owners and any subsequent owners are covered by that under the prescriptive right, which also covers Rockefeller Plaza, the RCA Building in New York. That street is closed one day a year to maintain ownership of that property. No one has touched that area that is in question for over 40 years except myself. Smith has gone up, Floyd Smith, which lives on Lot 2, has gone up over the hill and built water dikes to prevent water from coming down through there. If there is a new road cut in there, and I talked to Lindgrens about this, I asked him what he intended to do with it, and he said, well, I'm going to throw in some cracker dust and some stones. That would never stop that water that comes down over that hill. I would have the same problem over and over again. This has been going on over two years now. I'm considering it harassment. Surveyors show up unannounced, unbeknownst to me, until I go out and see a bunch of flags or something sticking up in New York. At one time, they were out there, I called the police department, they showed up, then he turned around and just left. He said he wasn't surveying my property. The following Monday, he shows up to the planning commission meeting with a survey plan indicating that my property is their property and that my land is typically landlocked. I have no entrance or no exit to my home. I want it stopped before it goes to court. If it has to go to court, I'm prepared to do so. Thank you.
When's the planning commission meeting?
We already looked at the last presentation.
Did they make a recommendation?
They tabled it.
Was he there?
Yes.
Due to the decision.
Okay. Come on over here, the planning commission, there is nothing we can do about it.
Solicitor's saying that we need to hear some report or some decision by the planning commission before we can act further.
Yeah, the matters with the planning commission right now, I believe you were there and made a presentation to them. According to the engineer across from me, they tabled it. That means they're going to reconsider it or consider it at a later meeting. After they consider it, they make a recommendation to us that will come before the board of supervisors at probably the next or the June meeting, and at that point in time, the board will consider what to do based upon that recommendation.
I'd just like to bring everybody up to date on where we are with our work system in the Penn Township Municipal Authority. We have received our bids, they have been opened, and we have been a little bit disappointed in the end result of our bid process. They're a little bit higher than expected, and we're in the process right now of trying to acquire financing for the amount that's going to be contributed to it. If we do not proceed to, or if we wish not to proceed to partake in this operation, we will be losing $903,000, if I'm not mistaken, it's over $900,000, of grant money, which is no cost to the community and the improvement of this infrastructure. As a member of that board, I'm not very happy with the situation we're in, any considerations that we're looking at at the present moment, but it's not something that we're taking lifehartedly, but we feel that we need to consider because we can't afford to do it in any other option. So I just want to let the township know where we're sitting and what our plans are and we keep people involved since we are basically a subsidiary of the participation from you.
How much dollar money does the municipal authority have set aside for this project?
We already had $250,000 put into it. We're probably going to end up putting another 100 into it, which is a considerable amount what we had figured on this thing, and we figured that that and the grant money, we were going to have substantially right exactly what we needed. We are presently at the moment looking at about a $600,000 deficit.
Now, the money you're just talking about is grant money. Do you have a Penn Vest loan or are you applying for...
We do not have a Penn Vest loan. We are in the research situation. We've been very aggressive and we've had less than a week to do any investigating. We are doing everything we possibly can to find out all our options, our lower straits and everything else, and we are trying to do our best to eliminate the cost increases that probably, or we're going to have to incur on this. It's probably a Penn Vest loan present that I'm seeing that we may be able to acquire. It would end up spreading out over a long timeframe, which keeps the costs at a minimum, and it's just something that we were all not prepared. We thought we had this thing covered and it's just come in over budget. We've got our engineer looking at it tomorrow night. We will be discussing our options of whether we approve this and proceed to go further or whether we're going to close the door on this. We are really optimistic that we're going to have some answers here. We've got some meetings next week that, in regards to financing, that I think are going to satisfy our needs hopefully through Penn Vest.
Roughly, how much is the budget for this project, roughly?
About 1.5.
And which $900,000 you have?
900,000 plus some others. It's basically, we have to get out two contracts. I apologize, there's two contracts with us, so it basically comes out to 1.6, okay? They have the electrical project with that. So it's basically a 1.6 project, okay? We were trying to get this thing under the 1.2 window. That was not the situation at hand. You also got to realize that out of that money that we have earmarked to partake in this, we have been paying for all engineering and all excessive costs or all upfront costs that came into this must come out of that money, too. That money means that we've been spending already into this project, and we have been into it pretty substantial at this present moment. So we're already losing more than that 250,000, adding on to that 900,000 if you understand what I'm trying to say. So I'm just bringing you up to date, and so I can't bring better news.
You're not asking right now, or do you anticipate asking for any action by the township?
Ah, yes, we are. As in all matters, in terms of this municipal authority, I think we need to have the support of the township in any manner that we participate in. And that's why I'm here tonight to explain that to you. If you look into that, we are a entity of you votes, and you must approve any financial obligations that we occurred to, if I understand that correctly.
Correct, because if something would go wrong, the township's responsible for the result.
Now, financially, I do not see us not being able to meet the financial obligations of the law. We've looked into that, we've investigated that, we've got a very strong structure at the present moment. We've been doing a lot of infrastructure upgrades. We are finishing Market Street with Don Cannon, so that yearly money that we can dump into that will become available, plus a little bit of capital reserves that we acquired each year as we try to plan for the next project. We've been doing everything on a cash basis on any projects that we've done. We haven't borrowed any money since the verdict project, and we wished not to do any for this, but for the unforeseen expectations of what the bids came in for, we have no choice.
At this point here, you've not accepted any of the bids, though?
No, tomorrow night will be the discussion for that, 7:00.
So is it possible for us to reject all the bids and put our arms out a little bit further and see if we can find somebody in another area that would be interested? Just my line.
We have by December 31 of this year to complete the project, or we lose $900,000.
How long does it take to complete the project? How long do you think...
Right now, we have a project scheduled. When it breaks ground, it's an aggressive schedule of six months, okay? The project is projected to be done by the beginning of December, online, serving the customers. If it is not online, we are on the hook for all $900,000. There's a lot at stake there. We either got to go or we can't, and it's, we've worked very, very hard to do this most economical way we possibly can.
Oh, I agree. I mean, from the meetings I've been in and then the notes I read, I can honestly sit here and say that you guys have done very well in the process of doing what you, even going door-to-door to get the surveys done, okay? So I look forward to hearing back from you guys and thank you for informing us on what's taking place with the town.
I can pretty much guarantee that wherever you guys support us in financial, you will not be on the hook at any point. That's the honest opinion of the board and myself. We have the ability to cover the expense and not be a burden on the township itself, or I wouldn't be here communicating this.
But we don't want you to deplete all your funds either towards, you know, having the future projects.
That is correct. I understand that. And we were in that situation when we closed out Down in Perdix and when we were able to control our expenses and get things under control to a point where it took us two or three years to get back on our feet. And it may take us two or three years to get back on our feet again, but we all feel confident that we can recover from this.
After this project, is there anything within the scope of the board that they're looking at doing? Is there any new projects?
Well, if you remember when I was here earlier, I explained that this is only covering 50% of the water infrastructure in Sunshine Hill. We have the other 50% to proceed with. That may be delayed for a couple of years till we come up with the cash revenues to proceed with that, because we will not, I'm pretty sure, those are board members all across the board, will not go borrow money to proceed with the rest of it. We will do it as we can afford it, by doing what we want. So this is just something that was unexpectedly came out, you know? We've had the engineer look all over this week on it and spent, I spent more time this week than I really needed to, and gave up a lot of time, and there's a lot of other board members that have already done it, too, and they're still going to be adding more and looking around and everything else, so we're not giving up on this and we appreciate your support. That's all, good.
Thank you, sir.
Can I ask a question? The new system, that will allow you to bring more customers online.
We will have a capacity to acquire, yes, new customers, okay?
That would help pay for the...
We have the ability to take on any new development in that immediate area or any other, we have 150,000 gallons stampede, okay?
And any new development also has new tapping fees that would help pay for this?
If we add new tapping fees, new revenue to it, and it would need and help in our, yes, it would, okay?
It's an important project.
It's going to be a very valuable project for future expansion in that immediate area, and that immediate area is expected to have expansion, okay? And we may be able to acquire existing customers that are running in that existing area. That's been discussed. It's not guaranteed, it's not being confirmed 100%, but the ability's there for us to be able to pick up extra revenue, but we cannot figure on that at the present moment. It's there, we've been hoping for it for years, and it's just not, the economy's not making it move fast enough. I'm sorry, that's basically the end result of it, so that's all.
Ellen? Okay. Mr. Gauss?
I'll come to the moment.
Linda Gauss?
Carolyn Carnes?
Yeah, last month's meeting, under the lease report, Chief Pickles had mentioned that his department was addressing complaints about the garbage bags that were being dropped off out of the corner of 274 in Belleville Road. I was wondering how that situation is going with the investigation, because garbage bags are still being dropped off. A month later, there was another three or four sitting there on Sunday. I don't know if you're not hitting the people that are doing it or if they're just don't care.
We've issued several citations for the dung, and it's slowing down. I think as far I talk to Mr. Gamber, he's talking about putting up a sign, actually.
Yeah, because there were, like I say, there were three or four bags sitting there Friday afternoon again.
Yeah, yeah, I know. We picked two up Sunday morning and then picked those three up on Sunday afternoon.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First of all, was there a building permit issued for Marstella for her second plant?
Second plant?
Second plant.
Where's the second plant located? Because dancers know...
Remember mine, the first plant.
It's a concrete mixer, that's what he's talking about.
Okay, no, dancers know, a permit would not...
Why not?
I didn't know it was going in.
There was an inspection, there was no inspection done on that either. Now, that's two of the statements. Do they have a permit for that Jiffy John down there? Do they have a permit?
Yes, yes.
Do they? Okay.
Yeah, actually, it's up, they have a Jiffy John and they have a holding tank, which is, the holding tank's up for renewal tonight.
I did, I was concerned about the building permit, because I heard the other month that nobody gets any concessions in this township anymore because it's costing us problems. And now we have a guy that, very visible down there, puts up a second concrete plant with no permit, no one even addressed it, no inspection. I think this township better get a set of rules that we can all abide by. Thank you.
Anything else, Jesse?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Helen, who do we, where would we go from here on this, then?
I have to talk to our inspector to find out, first off, if that's under the UCC code, and if it is, we send them a notification that they're in violation and to get the permit and get going on it.
Do we order a cease and disorder on that going until the...
That would be your decision.
Because that's what they're in the path.
Yes, so that would be your gentleman's decision.
Can you gather that information for us, supervisors, and please?
Yeah.
Have it in our boxes?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Fickle?
I have a few questions for the supervisors. We had a situation the end of last week and beginning of this week, and I wrote down some of the questions, and someone will lead into some of the questions that you were asked here already. The situation happened earlier this week. The question for the supervisors is, does Helen have authority to actually call DEP and represent the township? Or does she act on her own?
Want me to answer?
I don't, what did she do?
Basically, calling the DEP and claiming that I'm doing something illegally on my property down there in Perdix, when I was not doing something illegally. And my question is, was she authorized to do that, as in representing the township?
I was...
Hold on a second, Helen.
Okay.
Solicitor, is she obligated to answer that question during this...
Well, it depends upon the circumstances surrounding the complaint. She has certain authorities under the township to do certain things, such as exploring complaints, et cetera.
There was a complaint.
With an absence of a township manager, there is extended...
Didn't call, it was email.
Extended job duties that the secretary has. So when the complaints come in to this office, they come in to the secretary, so...
Isn't anything looked into before an accusation is made?
Okay, well, information was provided to, I believe information was provided to Helen, and information was provided then given over to the police department for them to investigate on what was going on. Is that correct, Helen?
Yes. We received a complaint, and I did not accuse anyone. I asked a question of DEP through email, not through a phone call. And I copied you, gentlemen, with those emails.
Correct. Helen brought that with me.
You need them?
No, it's, just for your edification, the exact question was, Penn Township would like an update on Kim Lanker's property along SR 1115, and goes on, there's no accusation made, just asking for... And goes on, there's no accusation made, just asking for an update.
That was the first one, and then the second one.
There is currently a cease and disorder.
There is from us, yes.
On from us?
Yes.
I would like a copy of that, because there is definitely not. Also, yeah, I mean, to actually call, I mean, contact DEP and tell them I'm in violation, when I'm not, is actually a false accusation, and that's why I was wondering. The next question is, this comes from a meeting that I had with engineers and with people from DEP, who from the township is responsible and to be held accountable for claiming that I have no approvals from the township, or, I mean, to DEP, to the post site and the process, I mean, what we plan on putting it up there, and telling them we have no variances or anything.
Question, was that in the lines, the reference to what your NPDS permit application you're going through?
This was all the meetings we've had for the stormwater, NPDS. This, this is all these meetings.
That is the ones you gentlemen voted on last year, this year?
2010.
2010.
When all the variances were approved by the township. Which leads me to the next question. With the variances that were approved in 2010, how comes they were never given to the zoning officer and his office? And I got all sorts of letters claiming I had no variances on the beginning of this, that I had no approvals or anything. Why was that letter held? And they had no recollection of it?
The zoning officer was at any variance for zoning hearing boards or conditional uses, or not the conditional use, I'm sorry.
In 2010? And it was never provided for?
To our zoning officer.
That is correct. And that will hold up in a court of law. It was never provided from your office to them.
And you also never submitted a zoning permit for it to be attached to, to go to the zoning officer?
The claim was that I had no variances and no approvals to do what we wanted to do up there.
There's a conditional use that you put in. There is a zoning, that's round one, Linker. There is a variance.
They have a copy of it now, but they didn't. When all the claims and all the letters and all the harassment was being sent out one after another.
Is it true that you do not have authorization to remove soil or film material from the site?
I got permission last Thursday from DEP.
Monday, April 27th, at 10:57 a.m., Department of Environmental Protection Waterways and Wetlands program wrote, "Mr. Lanker does not have authorization to remove soil or film material from the site." I'm just asking if you have the authorization.
On Thursday, I got a phone call from them authorizing. It is on record. That Neil Ives from the county DEP got permission and called me back and said, "We had permission to remove the topsoil that is stored on that site."
It's from the Perry County Conservation.
Yeah, but this is from DEP.
Yes, now, let me finish. Then on Monday, at around 9:00, I got a phone call with a conference call from Neil Ives and Ron Eber. Saying to cease, you know, I mean, for the moment, and I had questions to answer. There was six, I think, six questions that I answered, and gave them comments back on and are under review right now. And they asked me to cease everything until those comments are addressed. But I did not go in there without approval from DEP.
And this is just a verbal approval? Do you have anything in writing from DEP?
I contacted DEP and to clarify this, this email. And apparently, there was a miscommunication between DEP in Harrisburg and Perry County Conservation. They, DEP told Perry County that, you know, they moved the dirt once, once they get the answers to certain questions. And DEP, the Perry County Conservation, took it to mean that he had permission to do it. They then gave him permission to do that, to take the dirt from there.
Perry County Conservation.
Yes, and, and then, and then he had to answer these questions. When it came to light on Monday, the main office with Perry County, because they're working in conjunction with each other, their conservation's doing some things for this permit and the main DEP's doing things for the permit also. They told them that, they misunderstood that. They, they said that we wanted the answers to the questions first before he could remove the dirt. So, so, I verified that there was a communication between the two DEP offices and the other, and he was given permission to remove that dirt.
And also, last fall, this was a recorded meeting with our attorney and enforcement officers from DEP and engineers also, where they actually gave us permission last fall to remove topsoil. Then they asked us to actually stabilize it for the winter, and which we are going back to them right now and also asking, you know, I mean, why? Because there was no problem until calls came in from the township too. So, we're trying to clarify what changed their opinion in a recorded meeting when they said we could remove the topsoil pile. Nothing else, I could not bring anything in, I could not take anything else out, but I could remove the topsoil pile. And that was in a recorded meeting with our attorney. And for a township, and that, in the same meeting, it was actually brought up in there that the township, and I don't know who, actually called and said, "They don't want a recycling center business within their township, they don't want it." So, who has the authorization?
A township official? A township official said that?
That was DEP in that recorded meeting. They did not give a name, they said Penn Township, you know, I mean, called in.
Okay, so, just do me a favor, Mr. Lanker, for clarity. Do not bring unfounded speculation.
That was in a recorded meeting, that did not come out of my mouth, that came out of their mouth.
What I'm saying is that it's assumption, okay?
No, that, they mentioned you.
They mentioned who?
The township.
They mentioned who?
They mentioned the township, they said Penn Township.
Said?
Notify them, they did, you know, I mean, they did not want this there. And I said, and even the engineer said, how?
Okay, until you can produce names of those individuals, whether on this board or on this office?
That will, that will follow, but.
But what it is, it's unmerited, and it's not right to bring unspeculation or onto this board unless you can actually produce a name and a date and a time.
We will be asking for that in speaking.
Okay, and just because.
We will be asking for that in speaking.
You know, and I would appreciate, I really, I do, I really, if that's, if that's something that's taking place out of this office or from this board, then that needs to be addressed in another manner.
Because this has gotten way out of hand and we've had an awful.
Correct.
I mean, this leads into some of the stuff that you were saying. With two properties with the same zoning, why are two things allowed to go so totally different?
Totally agree with you.
Not permitted to have the same uses and the same permitting process. Example, and I know you don't know this. In 2009, I actually was looking at buying Nevin White's property, where Marstella is in there. At that time, you know, I mean, I was told it was mandatory in a recorded meeting from the zoning office that I had to have a traffic study done. Marstella never had to have a traffic study done. I had to hook onto the sewer because the sewer on that property did not meet township requirements. It is a holding tank that is in very bad shape. Iowa's only going to have five employees, six at the most, they have a lot more. So, why were they given special consideration if they didn't even have to hook on? Where is their NPDS permit? They have that, easily had over an acre of disturbance on that property. And it, it's not just one project at a time, it's cumulative, it goes on everything. So, why, where's their stormwater management plan? Why isn't it being addressed by the township, you know, I mean, for approval and also DEP? Who gave them permission to actually put a washout pit on top of a stormwater line that leads to the river? There's a, you know, there's a stormwater line that passes right underneath that. I know the property very well, because I have the whole plans for that property.
Have you filed a complaint with DEP on that issue?
Well, it's all coming, I'm being straight up here tonight, this happened pretty quick here. And back to what he said, Marstella, did they obtain a building permit for putting the building there? They have multiple buildings that have gone up there with, with no stormwater plans either. They're, one of the complaints they have me is the stockpiles they're claiming are too high. What is the difference with Marstella? Those towers hold materials, there is no difference. And those things exceed 25 feet tall. And they're filled with sand, concrete. There's like, there's like two different, you know, I mean, things here. One, I'm being pushed to go to a massive extent, and they're just letting the left slide, one thing after another. I have to have setbacks on my entire, every side of my property. Where's their setbacks? I have to plant trees around my property. I have to plant 1,200 trees on that property that's already wooded.
And you put the setback requirements on the DEP?
You guys.
No, it's the zoning.
No.
Why don't they? Where's their buffer zones? This has turned into major harassment. I can only guess there's probably 40 or 50 calls that Chief Pickles has had from every time we pull on the site. And the harassment we have gotten is just unbelievable. And after 130-some thousand dollars worth of engineering that I'm into right now to try and create a site for something that'll benefit everybody in this area for materials, how much did Marstella actually spend to actually walk right in, set up a plan, and do something that's more detrimental to the environment than I ever would've and ever planned on? It brings up a lot of questions, you know, I mean, why they're given preferential treatment. That's all I have to say at this time.
Please go ahead, Helen.
CC?
Yes, actually, there were some very good points brought up, and I would like to echo those sentiments and those questions. Why aren't the ordinances equal across the board? I fought that battle many, many times, and yes, I have complained quite a lot, because I have to look out my window at a very large pile of concrete. That's clearly in our ordinances, which I brought up at a previous meeting, cited our ordinances that support my findings, there were four or five that evening that I brought up, that were violations of township ordinances. Tell me why nothing is being done about, and this is not directed at any particular situation or property or, or plan, this is anywhere in this township. Why are we not consistent in enforcing our ordinances? If we're not going to do this, why do we bother have ordinances on the books? I'm very frustrated with this as well. This has gone on how many years? When there's a problem brought up that there's a clear violation, nothing is being done about it. Are we that blind that we can't see it? Are we that dumb we can't read it? There's a problem that they're not enforced across the board evenly, fairly. I echo Mr. Lanker's sentiments, I echo Jesse Boyer's sentiments. I think the board needs to take a look at the ordinances, take a look at the plans, and start acting fairly. That's all I have at this time, thank you.
I'd like to respond, if I may, CC. Am I not clear that you were previously a supervisor?
That's true.
Okay.
One of three.
Okay, was it, were you not a supervisor during the time of these situations that have been taking place?
Absolutely.
And I remember coming to meetings for several years, oh, for a good year, and so, months. I never once heard you cry out about these, about these violations.
Oh, yes, you have. Oh, yes, you have.
Really?
Oh, yes.
To this passion and to this degree?
Oh, yes, sir.
Really?
Yes.
Well, I'm not going to sit here and debate with you, but.
Good.
You know, it's a little.
Thank you.
And we are trying to bring some of these things under control, trying to be more on top of these things. Unfortunately, there's a mess that was handed over to the new board. When I say new board, since I've been on, a lot of these things were prior. But if you have not heard in the, in the meetings and conversations about bringing these things under control, that these people just don't come back into our township and do what they want to do. They come under the pretenses of wanting to do good things, and then they come in and just do what they want to do.
All right, let me add this. You have a huge situation on the Ward property, MW2 property. To my recollection, there are nine conditions on that plan that have not, to this day, been met. One of them being the fence. Every time it's questioned, oh, the fence is on backorder. My God, if I ordered from that company and that fence was on backorder this long, I would definitely be looking for another fence company. You mean to tell me, yes, at the junkyard. You mean to tell me, nothing can be done about any of these? Is there any follow-up to these conditions on plans? No. Mr. Benner is proof of that with Chuck Stoner's plan. How many plans were, were made with conditions and it never followed up one? Whose responsibility is that?
Well, and the thing about it is, is that I've gotten pushback and opposition, opposition from you referencing to Helen, the majority of the time, when you have a situation that arises in the office, who do you call?
Normally, I'd call the chairman, Henry.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you do understand that Mr. Holman's authority outside of this office.
It's one of three.
Of one of three. Okay? Have you called Supervisor Mr. Meyer? Have you called me referencing to anything?
Most of the complaints I get are either highway-related or I, the police department takes care of conditional, of complaints now.
Okay.
Yeah.
But for the majority of the time, when you have a situation that arises, who do you call to get input from? You just said it, you just said it.
I did, I'm not denying, I call the chairman.
Okay, all right. So, therefore, it seems like the, of the position that I asked or mentioned in the past that I feel that we need to see and fill in this office, is that maybe we need a township manager. And I was told that won't happen, okay? So, maybe we need another, that position back in this township with the right job descriptions and requirements, so things don't happen like they did in the past. Proper oversight and things are going on. I'm just as frustrated as you are and Mr. Lanker and other people in this room about the crap that has taken place in this township that shines bad light on us, that we can have people to come into our township and think they can come underneath this umbrella of sunshine and then give us a septic tank full of crap. So, I'm just as frustrated as you are, because our citizens that sit here and sit out in their homes deserve a whole lot better than what they've been getting. A lot better than what they've been getting. I just got done leaving a piece at convention where it talks about engage the people, engage the people. Until now, there's been no engagement of the citizens of our township, am I correct?
You're correct.
Okay, and it's time.
It's been, no, I shouldn't totally say you're correct.
There's been some engagement.
It depends.
It depends on the situation, yes, you're absolutely right. But, but you know what? It's time to make those changes. Each and every one of us have a responsibility in this room, and everybody sitting in their home have a responsibility. One, to keep us accountable, and I have no problem with being kept accountable, none whatsoever. Some of these things you bring up tonight, I've been making notes, have you not been seeing me? Because I want answers, I want to find out what's going on. Because what this does is tell businesses, well, does town township want you or don't they want you? Or what kind of business do they want?
It just tells you come in and do what you want because we're not going to do anything to you anyhow.
And you know what? And I personally, and as you sitting here tonight, everyone, and our citizens in our township, I want to see that changed. But can it start with just me? Yes. But there's two other supervisors and there's people in this office that we have to start doing things upright and doing things timely and correctly that we don't sit here with egg on our face every time we come to a meeting. And I agree with you. I absolutely agree with you. We run into a conflict when you have business and residential butting up against each other.
You don't need to.
And we don't need to. If we plan the township properly, correct?
That's correct.
Plan the township properly. Let's bring businesses in that bring jobs to our community. Not just a business that brings a tax revenue, but let's bring businesses that bring jobs to our community.
Have one set of rules.
With, exactly. And that we follow those rules.
And that's what hasn't happened.
Correct. Oh, exactly. And I agree with you because we're sitting here discussing these problems meeting after meeting and year after year because one hand shakes another hand, one hand washes another hand. And you know, those days of those politics and those things that go on should end. Should end. Yes, Mr. Lenker?
I just want the citizens of the township to know, that pile is not there and staying there by my choice. I've had numerous requests to grind that and remove that. And the people who will not let us touch it is actually DEPs, May Office, Central Office. They will not let us change that, you know what I mean, pile whatsoever because what they're claiming is all the plans we have submitted. If we change that, then they're going to reject the plans and we have to start completely over again.
And that's from DEP?
That is from DEP. You see all the hassle we're having and all the times I'm asking right now just to remove a topsoil pile. And all the hassles I'm having. So I mean, it would be ground up and gone because we could have used it on multiple jobs and we're not allowed to touch it.
And that's where we need to get DEP, County Conservation, and communication to the township and letting everybody know what's going on. That's, and then that's, and you heard Chief Pickles even say, that's been a breakdown in that communication or misunderstanding of communications. You know, I've learned in this day and time, a gentleman's word is no good anymore. Have it in writing. Next time you get permission to do something, have it in writing and make sure those departments get that information to the township. That way, the police aren't being called. That way, you know, if the chief gets called and Helen gets called, Helen can say, hey, this is what DEP just recently sent us. And that way, there's knownness and understanding.
And just so everybody knows, when I did get permission, I actually called, you know what I mean, Chief Pickle's office and I actually left a message for him to let him know.
But what I recommend in this day and age though, sir...
That I did get permission.
Get it in writing. Verbals, verbals aren't good anymore. I know. I just recently tried to buy a property somewhere and they gave me a verbal and that verbal was no good. A verbal was no good. Had to be in writing.
But I'm not trying to slide around. I mean, it's, you know what I mean, when I get something, I'm putting it out there. But I have every email, every text, you know what I mean, everything, back and forth.
Okay, the only, my recommendation is to you, anytime DEP or the Conservation Office says something, make sure that you get it in writing. And that is either in their office or your office, forwarded to them. That way, everything is complete and everything's in order. That way, it says, our police department, time to do what they need to do instead of coming out on something that may be frivolous or maybe not, that's already been covered.
That's what I was trying to, you know what I mean, save him from wasting the officer's time coming out, you know what I mean?
Let's get it in writing.
Businesses. Yep.
Sir?
Were you finished with your remarks?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Stanley?
A question. Now, when you send out these notice of non-performing use hearings...
Yes.
What you put down there is, the request is to change the non-performing use.
Mm-hmm.
That's it. So I get this letter in the mail. That means nothing to you. Instead of that saying, the use now is a daycare center that would like to go to a rehab center.
Then you're asking me to basically flesh out the letters. Explaining more what they're requesting. Okay.
I mean, when I see this stuff, I see all the townships and they put those in the paper and they actually spell it out to the public and say, look, you know, do I want to get on your meeting with them? I know I got a hearing, I guess, next month in a neighborhood near Mother's House.
Yes, Mr. Carpenter.
I was hearing on that. And not a big deal, but I guess he's going to put a shed in, but doesn't say that on the paper.
He wants to put a garage in between his house and the road.
I figured that.
Yeah.
Not in the sense, but this is again, the request is to, you know, to change.
Brian Peters.
Yes, sir.
A question for you. I just seen today in the record, public notice, Perry County Board of Commissioners partying with municipal officers or public carrying accordance with Pennsylvania municipal planning. And I see Penn Township's not listed on that. You're talking about planning commissions and things.
Okay.
It's a comprehensive plan, subregional for northern, southeastern, and western Perry County. And it gives, mayors will burn all of the township, et cetera, et cetera. I don't see Penn Township.
Okay, that's the Perry County Economic Development Board? Is that what that is?
Perry County Board of Commissioners.
Okay. I've just wondered if that's the P E C D, the Perry County Economic Development Board? Is that...
I don't know. Could be. I just, it's sort of weird not seeing... I haven't seen Penn Township going there.
I can tell you, I have been nominated to be a part of the Perry County Economic Development Board until they get state approval. I'm taking it from eight members to 21 members. Though I participate, I'm not a voting member on that board yet. But I can tell you, in those discussions we've had, Penn Township has been very much a part of those conversations and the Business Park has been very much a part of that conversation. Matter of fact, it's to the point now that if we don't, I think there's like eight properties left to sell, nine undeveloped. One is sold but undeveloped. I believe it's the doctors were originally planned, the dialysis center. But anyway, so if something doesn't happen with that park soon, they're going to run out of money to pay taxes on that property, okay? So it is a focus. They have, the Perry County Economic Development Board has just recently held a retreat. And then they did a follow-up meeting. It was a couple Tuesdays ago. They followed up on a Thursday and they are actually breaking down the township into, or not the township, but the county into, where the infrastructure is lacking to bring commerce to our communities and where are those communities best slated for those things? Where's the most purpose or potentials? So I can tell you, through the Perry County Economic Development Board, this township has been spoken about. But like most of the townships throughout the county, there is a lot of, there's a lot of supervisors, a lot of borough council folks that are silent to the county and referencing to their townships, you know? But I believe Mr. John Gerner is a part of that Perry County Economic Development Board, which has been in this meeting several times, wanting to start the Economic Development Board for our township, which I was hoping the chairman would be here tonight that we could discuss that. But that will happen at the next meeting if the chairman's here, just because I think it's relevant to our township to develop and to grow it in those areas, 1115 corridor, our Business Park.
Who's next, Helen?
I'm all done here, sir. I have another question.
Okay.
Helen?
Yep.
Did I miss it? Did you guys put the notice about it in the paper yet?
No, I did not. I was going to get the permission tonight.
Okay. And if I see the municipal authority out there, I noticed everybody else has already.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bender, anything else?
Helen, can I ask a question referencing to this then? Have we received anything from the commissioners inviting us to be a part?
No, not from the commissioners. The only, last thing I got from the commissioners is about the solid waste plan. That's in the packet.
I will be contacting Commissioner Rudy, all right? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bender, anything? Bob Johnson?
Nothing. I did come to keep what happened. Thank you.
Jody?
Just come to keep him in line.
Good luck.
Over there, I'm petting over here.
Okay. Jeff's done. Craig?
I want to try to be quick. Our 2014 end-of-year report, our 990 is actively being worked on. That's due May 15th. I have a copy for Henry. Should I just... I'll just highlight some things in there very quickly. I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight. At Mr. Holman's request for some of the data he requested back in November, I've expanded. This report is actually, I think, 19 pages now, so there's a lot of data inside. First page is kind of a highlight of 2014. And emboldened there is our first due fail rate, zero, again, for the ninth consecutive year. The only agency in the county that can say that and we're proud to brag about that. Also lists our officers for the upcoming year for 2015 and highlights the balance of some of the bigger achievements for the year last year. Next page is our end-of-year 2014 call statistics. You'll see we were dispatched on a total of 1,156 calls. Four calls, the number right above that, calls missed is where we did not have an ambulance available because of maintenance or because we're already committed to other emergencies. And then there were 37 calls total by our agency not handled and that includes some of Penn Township. That breakdown comes further. Those calls not handled means we had an ambulance available, we didn't have staffing. That was, our first ambulance was out, our first and second ambulance were out and the third or fourth ambulance did not have staffing to respond, but we've always got at least one out for emergency calls. Next page breaks down those calls by percentage and by quantity. And the realistic revenue is just if everything was billable and we collected everything and everyone paid full, which doesn't happen. You know, we made $809,000, everything for which the transporters have billed and paid in full. However, the realistic income from that's about $266,000. Next page, breakdown.
Can I ask you a question, Helen? What are you doing to collect that?
We, the billing company, we use Cornerstone Admin Systems in New Cumberland, has a third-party collection they use. We have in the past litigated through the Magisterial District Judge's Office to collect some that were outstanding. We try to steer away from that, being that it's a community. We tried off the payment plans. I can pay $10 a week to get the bill paid off. Some challenge that we've had, that we've actually participated in litigation through the Ambulance Association of Pennsylvania, is that if we don't sign an agreement with insurers, Atena's one of them, Blue Cross is one of them, where we accept a reduced payment from them. Basically, we become an in-network provider. They like play game where they'll send a payment for the service to their insured. Their insured has an obligation to remit that payment to us, but often the insured doesn't and we don't have a real high success rate in collecting that. The insurance commission has said it's not their problem because they, they're funded, I shouldn't say that. Because there is legislation that says what's to be done. Legislation has been approached, so it resulted in litigation, I believe in 2010, that's still ongoing. I was out in Pittsburgh trying to collect those monies. So that's one piece where it's, in a civil matter, you know, in money court, it's hard to get money out of people that don't have it and there's only so much you can go after through a sheriff's sale or constable's sale, unfortunately. So we're trying, but as with anything, when you're going with insurance, the rules are changing daily and there's not always a legal and enforceable obligation to collect from the patient, from the patient's estate. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Next page breaks down by municipality. You'll see our numbers, if you compare this to 2013 document, that we had more out-of-area calls. I think some of that is because, if you remember, the end of 2013, Ickusburg's ambulance went out of service. New Bloomfield took that over without adding any manpower, any equipment. So they're responding to Seville Township, Tuscaraway Township, and pieces of northeast Madison Township from New Bloomfield. Puts them out of service for a much longer period of time. We've responded into Bloomfield Borough, Center Township, the western end of Wheatfield Township, a lot more than previous. We've also responded down into the lower end of Penn Township more with Marysville's impending closure this week. And then up into Buffalo Townships, on occasion, even into Howe Township outside of Newport. So we're picking up some more calls outside the area, which again, we're out. Other agencies committed help to cover for us, but that number is the highest ever to have been reached last year. You'll see in Penn Township, we've dispatched for 488 calls, accounting for 42% of the calls total on which we were dispatched. We handled 477 of those. So there were 11 calls in Penn Township that were handled by another agency. In most cases, that was New Bloomfield, I'm sorry, New Bloomfield, Marysville, or East Pensboro Township. Next page is an approximate breakdown of the other agencies in the county. You'll see again, Ickusburg was out of service as of 12, 2013, and Marysville was out of service as of 5/1, 2015. Some jumps here that you see of more and more paid staffing, but some of these agencies simply don't have the call volume to maintain that paid staffing long-term. There's discussion right now Liverpool having some challenges with staffing that they're going to try to bring along some part-time people, but when you have a 300 or 400 call volume, the numbers just don't make sense. So and that's something where, even with 1,200 calls, 1,156 calls, we have a tough time paying our bills with that volume of calls and the turnaround time trying to pay crews about 50% of the time, supplementing volunteers. Next page is a breakdown of approximate, I'm sorry, come this page. Next page is a breakdown of our non-emergency transports and this was, I think, requested by Mr. Holman as part of his November request. It's total 753. That business blew up last year for us, which in a lot of ways was a good thing, but it brings with it staffing challenges, also additional cost. We added a fourth ambulance to the fleet. We've added a second transport van to the fleet to help pick up this volume. This volume, we've taken on this business as a secondary means of income first and foremost because we understand that the townships that we serve aren't rich and we understand that reimbursement from insurers isn't tremendous. So to supplement our emergency service, to provide that staffing 24/7, to get an ambulance out the door. The non-emergencies include wheelchair transports, stretcher van transports, and non-emergency ambulance transports, dispatch, discharges from hospitals, appointments for doctors, so on and so forth. That number is up greatly from 2013 at 753 and those we bill partially in-house and partially through the billing company. And those, we have a much better return because there's actually diagnosis of, of conditions that warrant these transports. So and some of them actually are paid in advance as well. So with that, again, comes some additional costs, but I think the long-term is there's a need. The baby boomer population is growing. The nursing home populations are typically at max and we're providing that service oftentimes to Holy Spirit EMS and the Life Team EMS through Clinical Health System when they simply don't have the crews available. So we're supplementing them. We're providing a lot of services here at the local facilities at Kincora, Perry Village, and Stonebridge as well. Next page, an approximate breakdown of man-hours between volunteers and employees. Total of about 55,000 man-hours estimated that were done by our crews, by crews and social members. You'll see total of volunteers, this was another one of Mr. Holman's questions. As of the end of December, we have 32 crew members, 10 crew members, 22, I'm sorry, 32 volunteers. 10 crew members and 22 are social members. We have employees, 19 employees as of the end of the year. We're up to three full-time. Beginning of last year, we had one full-time. We added two more full-time salaried employees to run our transport service. They're certainly by no means paid what they're worth, but we try to make it as fair as we can and still pay the bills. And then the 16 part-time employees have covered the ambulances and covered transports for us. Next page, again, Mr. Holman's request for a vehicle fleet breakdown. We paid off, the fourth vehicle down ambulance, 29/3, that was paid off today. That's paid off in full with grant money from the state officer of fire commissioner. And the only debt we have is on the 2008 ambulance, the first ambulance listed, our mortgage on the premises and the line of credit, our operational line of credit. So we only have one ambulance loan as of today. The balance, as you can see there as of the end of December, of $96,000. Next page, and that also gives the purchase price, the year, the make-model, mileage, et cetera. So there's a lot of information on the vehicles there. Next page, a revenue report, and this is a sum, a sum revenue report. If there's additional breakdown that you require, please let us know. Shows the contributions and you'll see the Penn Township contribution is skewed because if you recall, in 2014, we received the 2013 contribution in 2014 and the 2014 contribution as scheduled in November. The next page, our expense report, and you'll show, you'll see at the bottom there a net loss of $20,500. That was covered with our line of credit. A big part of that was the growing pain with our non-emergency service and also a large amount of money that we're owed presently by the Middletown Home in Dolphin County and through A-Light or Response Ambulance Service. Remember the ambulances that were parked down in the Cove? That service had kind of gone inactive. They kept their license, but they were providing service. We picked up some of their contract, but there's been somewhat of a glitch in payment because we were providing it to a third-party secondary A-Light or Response. So we're working through that. They have a consultant on board to kind of sort everything out. So we expect to see that revenue, which will make us essentially a break-even at the end of the year. Next page is a cost analysis. This is provided, the formulary is provided by the Ambulance Association of Pennsylvania and that breaks down costs per hour, cost per day, cost per shift, cost per week, et cetera. Following page, end-of-year balances, all our cash balances and asset balances and then our actual liabilities. Again, the auto pay on the mortgage, the operations line of credit, the ambulance loan for the '97 ambulance, which is paid off, and the ambulance loan for the 2008 ambulance. The revolving account for fuel is paid off monthly. That's not a, that's not a long-term... The revolving account for fuel is paid off monthly, that's not a long-term debt, and then we have a Staples card, a Visa account, and a Lowe's card that we use as needed, but typically, they carry a balance from month to month. So total assets of seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars on the seven hundred and forty-three, and liabilities, at that point, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. So we're, I think, good with equity, we just don't have a lot of cash on hand, as you'll see from those numbers. Next page is 2015, year-to-date, that was as of the end of March, we haven't yet received the April numbers, we'll receive them the end of this week, and we're right on track to be eleven hundred, twelve hundred calls again this year. You'll see, February, March particularly, calls missed by second unit were high, seven and eight's a high number in my mind, compared to the last couple of years, and I think that's largely because we saw a lot of timing with calls, where we had two calls dispatched within five minutes of each other, and we just simply didn't have a second ambulance staffed, or our first ambulance was already halfway down the road and wasn't able to turn around fast enough. So I think a lot of that's kind of a fluke, and probably just more of a timing issue than a staffing issue. Next page is our year from 2000 to 2015, and again, highlighting and kind of bragging since 2006, zero first due fail rates. Next page, 2015 budgeted funding contributions by municipality. Again, thank you to the residents of Penn Township and the supervisors for your fifteen thousand dollar allocation for 2015. And the final page is our 2015 working budget to start out the year, and again, those numbers are higher with the expectation of the increased cost to provide the non-emergency service, but also the revenue numbers are higher with the anticipated collection from the non-emergency service. Certainly, I don't expect you to digest it all tonight, but if there are any questions, or if Mr. Holman has any questions, please let us know, and there's another copy for your record. And we, as always, appreciate your support. I did want to provide, from Rossmoyn Animal Emergency Trauma Center, pamphlet information for the police department. So if you have incidents, I'm told there's no longer a kennel in the township for injured or lost dogs. So that's a facility that'll provide free treatment for injured dogs, for injured animals. They have a fund set up to handle those. We had an occasion last week where an animal was injured, break down here, and unfortunately, the only option presented at one point was to euthanize the animal. Found out it was a resident here on Highland Avenue that owned the animal, we took it, in lieu of the police department, down to Rossmoyn, and they provided treatment until the family was able to find the animal. That was found through Facebook, and we appreciate all the help there, and getting that help. Also, on a personal note, that's all I have for the EMS side, there was an open records requested of the township, an open records request of the township that I did personally back in 2013, November 2013. It was denied initially by the township, I then appealed it to the Office of Open Records, who granted the appeal. At exactly the thirty-day mark, I received correspondence from your solicitor's office indicating that it was being petitioned of the county court for decision, that he was basically appealing, or the township was basically appealing my appeal ruling. That was January 28th, 2014. I've called the county, the proponentary's office, four different times, have always been given the answer that, well, it's in the works, we're not sure what's going on, and last Thursday, the 23rd, or whatever the 23rd was, Thursday, I believe, Ruth from the proponentary's office called me and said they're awaiting documentation to be submitted by Mr. Wagner on the township's behalf. So I don't know where that stands, but that's, I have the voicemail, if you'd like to listen to it, but he's...
Not in your case, she's talking Drack's case.
Then she must have been confused.
Yes.
Because I was very specific, and she called me back.
No, she was talking in the Drack case.
She indicated that she was waiting for information there. So I don't know where that stands, but I'm sure that Mr. Wagner's probably not real inclined to talk about it because of it being in litigation, but I will gladly discuss it however you'd like. The only other item I had, again, on a personal note, was the process to purchase advertising to put signage on the softball field. Is that through the rec board, or is that through the township itself?
On our fields?
Yes, yes.
Through the rec board.
Is there a form, or like a data sheet for that?
We need a, normally what we do, it's a people's already on it, we send out invoices for it, and then you give us a logo, basically what you want on the sign, and we order it and put it up.
If I could get information on that, pricing and such, I'd be interested in doing something there.
Yeah.
That is all I have, both on the personal side and on the EMS side. If there's anything at all that you need from me, or on behalf of the EMS company, please let me know. As always, thank you for your time, and thank you for your support.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Lee?
First thing, we finally completed our project down on 1600 State Road. May 16th, we are going to have a grand opening, a couple county officials, state officials coming in.
Do you like to know what's that?
For the chicken barbecue provided by Party Fair Company. Like the three supervisors, stand an invitation to the three of you. More down?
Thank you. The time, does it start?
Nine o'clock. One other thing, why are we on a junkyard? Got me started. Few months back, I asked about the junkyard, because there was a lot of violations, and one of the things that came out, and you weren't here, Mr. Wagner, but it was said that there was an injunction to have them shut down in the courts.
Which?
I'd sworn that it happened...
Yeah, who's the party?
Ward Department, Ward's.
Is it Ward's, or is it something else?
Well, the junkyard at the Ward property.
I believe, I think there was something, there was an injunction filed, a complaint for injunction.
How long did it take? Where was it filed?
Let me get the file answered. When I called and said, what's on my agenda, there's nothing tonight. If I'd have been told that this would have been a question, I'd have been happy to bring the file to tell you exactly where it is.
Got anything else here?
The Ward property, is that MW2?
MW2.
MW2.
No, he was asking for...
No, we were just talking about the Ward property while you were on.
Oh. Yeah, do you need that information?
Yes. Who needs the MW2? Is MW2 the junkyard?
Yeah, that's Ward.
Okay.
Mike Ward 2, I guess it's the Second Property Incorporated.
That's his condition.
You got a sheriff's return?
I didn't, I never got, the last thing I got...
I'll check.
Last thing I got was that...
Send me something tomorrow, I'll check under the status of Mother Terry Cannon.
Okay.
It was filed August 22nd, 2014, no, it wasn't, that's Penn Township.
Yeah, that's...
It was filed with the court, August 20th.
August 20th?
Yeah. Because we sent the money to them, plus for purposes of the sheriff. Okay, I'll check that tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you.
Helen, I think that's been filed up here very kind of quick.
Yes.
Yeah, the sheriff's return isn't back, I've got to check on that to see what the status of the service with Mother Sheriff was. We paid, we advanced money to the sheriff to do that, to see, I'm sure it's in his file that he served it, I'm going to go from there.
That's all I have.
Yes. Our audit report, was hoping to have it here, well, was hoping to have it last week, we're waiting to signature on it, that's it, so hopefully have it to the township, obviously here tomorrow or Friday. Our tanker has been out of service, I don't think I was here at the last meeting, so our tanker's been out of service for probably six weeks, five or six weeks now, it has some structural issues that, once they, of course, once they got it apart, they found the issue, and it was a lot more major than what they thought, so it's been at the back of the manufacturer being repaired. We were hoping to have it back by next week, and we had some other safety upgrades done to it while it was there. And last night, we had our second committee meeting, Penn Township was absent due to Mr. Holman, Chairman Holman's unfortunate situation, but just, we just had basically a roundtable discussion again with the Borough and Wheatfield Township being present, and since Chairman Shrope from Wheatfield Township, it was his first meeting, we basically had a orientation of the last meeting, and went through some other question and answers, and I think, once again, it was a very productive meeting, and looking forward to keep, to continue the momentum of the committee. Our next meeting would be, it's a quarterly process, so our next meeting would be sometime June, July, or August, we haven't come up with a date yet, and I'll be probably inquiring with who's going to be in attendance, and we'll set another meeting date. One other thing, Brian, there is Brian McGuire, there is a first responder dinner at the Masonic Lodge, do you have that information on, what are the details on that?
The details are that there's a spaghetti dinner at six o'clock, and all of the emergency personnel, fire company, EMS people are invited.
And that is, what's the date of that?
That would be this coming Tuesday.
Okay.
May 5th, six o'clock will be the meal.
All right.
And then if you can stay ahead of the meal, invite into the meeting.
Okay.
Carissa Kerzak?
Hi, how are you?
Hi.
I have a quick question. I reside on Roar Drive, and when I moved in 2007, it was dirt, it was a dirt road. Since then, we've had a winery put in, and there's a farm store that is also located on Roar Drive. I'm calling because the traffic has definitely increased, and there is no speed limit sign on our, on Roar Drive. And being a mother of two small children, a little concerned. So I'm wondering, is there, what is the speed limit? Because I'm telling you, people fly on that road.
It'd be twenty-five.
Okay, well, they are definitely going more than twenty-five.
Speed traffic. Is that coming from the winery or to the winery?
Well, you know, people still are asking where the winery is, even though there's signs. People are still turning down our drive to find out, huh, there's two signs for the winery. But I'm just concerned, because there was no posting of the speed limit, and people are really just...
And you're talking on Roar?
Yes, sir.
Because Cove, we just put...
I did notice that, and I'm like, come on, move to Roar, because it's just...
Yeah, but we, if it's not posted, we, you know, it's twenty-five.
Okay, so can I ask, is there any way of purchasing a sign, even if I do it, you know, ourselves?
I'll mark it down, we'll see what we can do up there.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, sir. You know, I was, thank you, I was looking at the little slow person that is fluorescent green or yellow, I was looking at that as well.
They have them online, too, I think they're free, actually.
Right, I was looking, because we have animals, too, I was going to get like...
Slow animals.
Slow animals, cross, chicken, dog, cat, you know, children, so, I just wanted to see, sir, if there was anything we can do, because it has really...
Yeah, well, and it's forty-five on Cove Road, which is totally ridiculous.
Right.
And when we set up the speeds on, I went through there to try and set it off, and it was, I was going forty-five, it was nuts.
I just have a question here, on those signs that we are putting up, are we dating those according to the state regulations? We are dating those?
Yes, they are getting those, they have to be put onto the list and all that, yes.
That's why we do the, it's a timed consulting project.
Mr. Pickle?
Haven't brushed up on the state code, but I always thought speed limits were fifty-five unless otherwise, basically. Have they changed?
No, it's, well, it's, and it's a rural area, too, fifty-five on the interstates, yeah.
Okay, is there anyone who did not sign in, I missed?
I signed in, but...
Oh, did I skip you by accident?
I guess.
Your name?
Brad Bird.
You must have signed in on the other one.
Oh.
Okay.
Gosh, gee. I was here at the, not the last meeting, but the one before that, I was at my first meeting. I took off work to come, because I normally work, I'm a truck driver, and I've wrote this up for years now, about this ATV before we were behind my house. I'd like to know if there's anything I can do about it, because right here is a nuisance ordinance. And I'd like to know if this is, here's a six-page letter back in October of fourteen, I gave to every supervisor, and I believe Chief Pickles, I don't know if he got one or not. I have pictures here of how close, I'd like anybody to see this, how close this is to my house. I have a heart condition back in 2006, now I just had another heart attack, and I don't need this stress on me, because I'm trying to get back to work. Anybody wants to see these pictures, and you want this to go on behind your house, thirty yards from your bedroom, anyway, in every room, I have triple-pane windows I had put in, in every room, you can hear it, especially in the back of the house, it's so loud, you can't stand to watch your TV, much less when the weather's nice, for me to open my windows in my house, forget it. Plus the dust, I explained all that in that letter, it was kind of crude, because I'm not a big writer, the dust blows all over my property, the dirt, it's a dirt track. I've had nobody come up there and actually looked at what I'm talking about now for five years. I've called the police, this guy went back there, woke me up, when I go to my back door, I didn't even say anything to him, he called me a copcalling asshole, that really got me. This is all true, my girlfriend, Mary, she can verify anything I say, I'm not lying about it, things are... Do I need to read the ordinance? It's a nuisance ordinance. I don't have my glasses, they're in the car.
I don't think there's any need to read the ordinance, sir.
Okay, it's the nuisance ordinance, it's not a noise ordinance. All I wanted this guy to do was just move it up further from my house, I'm on the corner of Cove Road, and saw a road crossing a little church, that's my house there. I paid like fifty thousand dollars in interest so far, and to live there, I've been there, I guess, going on seven years now, taxes and everything, and I have irregular long hours as a driver, but I am home every day. Right now, I'm not working, till I get back to work next month, and I have to pass my DOT physical and get back to work. I don't know if this is resolved, or what, but what it comes down to is for me to want to fix up the house and put the money into it, it's a waste, a total waste, I bought that house so I could get my rest when I'm off work. And every time I go to put two thousand bucks into something in that house, I'm reminded, I'm going to have to go, because I can't live there any longer and put up with that noise, like that. If I was doing that to him, I'd be a letter in mail. Because my property goes up the hill, and if you go there and look between the two houses, and you know how loud things are, and the dust they blow, it's a regular dirt track, and it's coming thirty yards from my bedroom. Comes down at an angle, on that letter, I even drew a crude little map of how the property line goes, although somebody left a report, the property stakeout on the one end of my property. So I'm trying to know, do I have to move, or what? Because I'm not wasting any more money or stress when the weather here gets nicer. And I'd like to show you the pictures, anybody want to see the pictures? How close this is to my house?
Just pick up...
I'm not being unreasonable here, like, I'm not, sir.
The obstacle, see if it's disorderly conduct, that's something...
Like, here's mine, like that, right here.
Does this guy have a racetrack on his property, or...
No, it's just...
He's riding his own ATV. The only thing you can deceive is a disorderly conduct, like an unreasonable...
And all what the guy was doing was just moving up a little further, and he wants to be like this to me, and I don't like getting pushed around. And I don't, I don't like getting pushed around and I've had enough, this is going on now for every, every summer first. Now I'm, now lately it hasn't, but I'm expecting that it will, like we talked at the last meeting two months ago.
When was the last time you had an incident?
Uh, well, last night he kept going by. There, 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 going by, but he's just trying to start again. Have me come outside so he can start on...
Well, maybe the next time, sir, I would suggest if it happens, call the police, say you want to determine if it's disorderly conduct making unreasonable noises. You're not going, you're not going to have too much success with a nuisance ordinance because that's not going to be considered business.
Okay, then I got to move that house.
No, I didn't suggest that, sir. I suggested you call the police to see if it constitutes disorderly conduct under the statute, making unreasonable noise. I'm suggesting that that's a better approach than nuisance because nuisance is very difficult under the law to be able to establish.
Nuisance, you on...
Sir, I'm familiar with what it is. I'm suggesting under the law...
Oh, I'm not going to read it, okay.
You, you may read it, but I'm suggesting to you, it's a better opportunity to be successful doing a disorderly conduct than it would be under the nuisance ordinance.
Okay, is, is that in writing? Disorderly conduct?
That's a state statute, sir.
State statute.
It's a state statute.
Okay.
It's in the crimes code.
Because my backyard and my property, I can't enjoy when this is going on. My property goes behind my house and up the hill into a little patch of woods and ears here, the ones I have the other ear. So I can't even use, go out back and do things without this blasting by me. And I've done nothing at all retaliation about this, except call the police, come in here now. And I'll tell you what, I'll, I'll just pack up and go because, because I don't need this stress on me. I got a, a nuclear test coming up on the fourth, I'm trying to get back to work. And I pay all that money and, and I don't need you to get treated like this.
Sir, in due respect, I'm giving, sir, in due respect, I'm giving you an avenue to pursue to try to address the concern by calling the police so they can determine whether it constitutes disorderly conduct or not.
Well, they're just going to tell me it doesn't.
And last night was the first time since last year that this is...
Uh, no, I got woke up three times when I get out of hospital and it only went on for five minutes. I'm not dead. And this isn't a law measure, a change law, this, this is unnecessary. And then it's, when, when the kid does it, he flies through there and the dust goes all the air over my place.
And you claim nobody came out there in five years, so that's it?
Well, they tell me there's nothing they can do, it's on his property.
You don't remember me coming out there and talking to you?
Yes, and it stopped. That was, he met me, how bad, when I came in here in person, really upset, I got like four hours sleep and then had to run out to go to work and go to New Jersey and work 12 hours driving the truck around Philly. I remember that.
And you didn't speak to Henry Holman over the weekend about this?
Uh, yes, I did.
At your house, okay. I, I'm just trying to figure out why you said nobody came out there in five years and take care of this.
To look at what I'm talking about and tell me, I, I don't care if I have to move, I'll move. I'm 60 years old, this is my chance to have a house. I won't have another one. And Mary lives there also and she, she's home in the, in the afternoon there and she used to go to bed early and all.
She has, has one.
She has COPD real bad. So all I wanted the guy to do was move it up, I don't want it to be like that. But I, I can't put up with this, especially now anymore. So I just wanted to make the point of it. Because what do you think that does to somebody, living there, put money in their house and then, and then oh, I can't live here? And then I'm, I'm afraid to even buy things for the house because I, I figure I'm going to move out. And I can't live like that, ain't what I work for.
Sir, we've given you a remedy. Please call the police the next time it happens so that can be done. What, this court is not going to be able to do anything right now to alleviate it. The better suggestion is when it happens, call the police so they can respond to it as they apparently did before and had it stop for a period of time.
Well, some of them didn't, once it was, okay. And I will keep that in mind and that's called a...
Disorderly conduct.
Okay. Thank you for listening to me here.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Me. Uh, this is about the bond issue down there, if I, a place of 1408 State Red.
Excuse me, sir, can you give your name?
Jeff Holman, Jeffrey.
Thank you.
And what it was, I'll make it short, no, that was when I moved in there, or beginning of late, when I moved in there, I went for a mortgage for that place and they said, are you nuts? I guess there was that many liens against it, it would have sent a normal man to prison. But I said, okay, I'll tell you what, I'll pay them off. So I got him to keep the money until all his liens were paid off. Now I'm ready to go get the mortgage for it, the final mortgage. And you guys are requesting I put a lien back on it again for the bond, but...
Letter of credit.
Let you have a line of credit. So you're asking me to do that, which they're going to blow me down. I mean, they're, they're going to say, no, you can't have a mortgage for that. But what I'm asking, I'm not asking for anything unreasonable. What I'm asking to do is let me go ahead and do those improvements. Make those improvements along the way and without the bond being there. The bond isn't going to make me work faster or slower.
Is this planned before?
No, I'm waiting for, I don't have the final plan.
We have, I just got it yesterday.
We have a conditional, conditional group...
That's the...
They asked me to sign it, is what they were, I can't sign this.
Um, he has to, before, before the plan can be done, there's notes to be put on the plan, the plan has to be signed.
Before it can be done, as in recorded.
As in recorded.
Board of Supervisors has approved the plan with...
Conditions.
So we have an approved final plan with conditions.
Yes.
Rich, is there any reason he can't just do, do the repairs without a, a letter of credit at his risk and then ask us to look at them and say, well, if they're done, then he does need to file a letter of credit? I mean, where in that...
What you're asking is, you have certain improvements that are required on the plan. When you look at, it's about his planning code under section 908 and 910, as you know, there, and it's been changed recently to allow the developer to decide what kind of credit. The difficulty that creates is if for some reason, God forbid, in the middle of the project, something happens to the developer or the landowner, it doesn't get done, then the township stuck. And then it's exactly what, if you've been reading the Perry County Times, we have in Bloomfield. 15 years ago, a good old boy who wanted to put a subdivision in did, and I'll take care of the streets, don't make me put up a bond, and he did. And now we've got 55 homeowners that have no approved streets.
This is on his own property. This is, this is improvements to...
What's the improvement?
The improvement is to his stormwater plant, to his stormwater basin. There's some grading, it's improvements to the embankment and various other things that need to be done. Seventy, $7,500, whatever it is.
You're, you're permitted to get a letter of credit from the bank and they don't...
That's a couple, a couple percentage for you.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I get to do that, I can't get the mortgage yet because they're going to say, you still have a lien against it.
It's not a lien.
It's not a lien.
A letter of credit from a bank, a letter of credit from a bank says that they will secure and guarantee that you're going to perform this work.
Well, I'll go to another bank because they told me we can't let the loan go through if any woman's going. I already spent seven years...
But this isn't, sir, this isn't a lien. This is not a lien. It's a letter of credit where the bank says, we will guarantee that you will do the work on the property. If not, the bank will pay the $7,500, which is a cost. It costs a couple percentages to do that.
Well, that's not what they explained to me. What was, when was this plan approved? A year ago?
Yeah, and I've been waiting for all this stuff.
I've been making it up. We have to have, we're going to have to reapprove it to get it reported because it's past 90 days.
Even with conditions outstanding still?
No, you, you have to do it within 90 days, otherwise you can't record the plan.
Okay.
That's state law.
So it has to come back before the board to reapprove what we've already approved?
Yeah, it's just reconfirming the approval.
Maybe tonight, if you, is possibly pass a motion approving it with the same initial conditions. The plan hasn't changed.
It's up to these guys.
All I want to do is get the improvement done.
You have the listed conditions that's still outstanding in your packet.
That way, once he achieves this, it doesn't be the next few weeks he can report, otherwise he'll be waiting a month to get it reapproved and then also to report it.
So is this on the agenda somewhere else, help?
Yes, it's under the planning commission.
Okay, well, we might as well take care of it during the agenda.
Okay, that's fine.
I have a copy, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question. Why, why would there even be a nuisance ordinance if it can't be enforced, just like any other thing people were talking about that weren't being enforced? Why, at 210 Township? Is this going to the state? Do I have to get a litigator? I remember what you told me.
Under the second-class Township Code, there's a specific section having to do with ordinance that can, that can be passed by townships regarding nuisances. The difficulty with that section of the Township Code, interpretations by the Commonwealth Court are such that someone's practice is good for them and may not, and may be a nuisance to somebody else. It's very difficult to take a particular course of, uh, course of conduct and label it as a nuisance. What is a nuisance to you may not be to me, what is a nuisance to me may not be a nuisance to you. That's why I...
Well, I think you have 30 yards from your bedroom.
That's why I suggested four times that you call the police and go to disorderly conduct as opposed to nuisance. Nuisance is your least probable chance of success. I'm trying to help you, sir.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm not quite...
Okay.
Thank you. And on the other side, on the Coon side of the property, that's where all the employees park right now and they're saying, I cannot park over there. But what I was going to do, if you look at the plans, it says there's no fence. I was going to go over to Rick, Mr. Coon, and I'm just going to let him pick out any, you know, his wooden fence, a building with wooden fence.
Something different than what's been approved.
That way, he doesn't have to look over at our property. But I would like to retain that area for employee parking. We added employees this year and parking's a premium, so it is there.
So this fence is not part of your...
It's on, it's on the plans. It's on the plans.
Well, my concern from a legal standpoint is there has been quite a year and the conditions is having to meet. Even if they're met today, you can't record the plan. It has to come back through the planning, or back through the process. And you can waive the need to come back through Planning Commission and bring it back to you, but the plan that he wants to have approved has got to come back to you.
And the conditions are...
Yes, the outstanding conditions are still on this list.
If we may, sir, can we address this and the other issue when we get to that, a part of the agenda? Is that okay, Brian?
That's fine, that's what I prefer.
Okay, let's, if we may, let's address that at that time when it comes up on the agenda, okay?
Sure.
Anyone else? I guess not.
We'll back up this one item on the agenda. There was an executive session held during the month for a police interview. What was that date again?
19th.
17th.
I'm sorry, 17th, you're right.
Oh, it was on April 17th. Invoices and expenditures.
Other than the normal operating expenses, we made a payment for the pension and we also paid for the audit tomorrow's.
There a motion to approve the invoices and expenditures?
I make the motion to approve the invoices and expenditures for the date of March 26, 2015, through April 29, 2015.
I second the motion with the exception of check number 28261, which I must abstain from because I'm employed by, for two associates.
Make sure that's on the agenda next month.
Okay.
Because there's only one person voting and that's not enough to cover.
Okay, well...
Can we approve all?
You can prove everything but that, yes.
Okay.
All is in favor, give us consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so move.
Okay.
Are you report?
Um, this month, we had deposits from cap tax for the earned income tax. We also received a payment from Duncan and Borough for the police contract and we had numerous tax receipts.
Any questions on the pending report? Not as our motion to approve. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
I second.
All is in favor, give us consent by saying aye.
Pending the audit.
Pending the audit.
I have aye.
Aye, so move. Minutes from the March 25th meeting and the March 28th Roadmaster meeting.
I make the motion that we receive both minutes of March 28, 2015 Roadmaster meeting and the March 25th Board of Supervisors meeting.
You say receive?
Approve, yes.
I second the motion. All of the fairies consent by saying aye.
Aye.
So move. Highway report, we have bids for 2A stone.
Yes, we received these and Harsco Metals came in at the low bid, at 22,400.
Okay, that's for 2,000 tons of 2A.
Mm-hmm, with transportation.
Okay.
I have a question, was Harsco one of the original bidders?
No.
Or this was an additional bidder?
He was an additional bidder. He's the one that Henry explained that did not give us his new address. And also Jay Folkwood was a new bidder and a couple of the first bidders did not send a second bid in.
I have a question, Elmo. When there's bids, are they bidding stone or are they bidding slag?
They're bidding 2A stone, aggregate, that we're allowed to use on the roads and stuff like that.
It would have to be Penn dot materials, fact. It's a Penn dot material bid.
Slag needs Penn dot?
That's an excellent question. There are certain conditions where slag may be able to meet. Has to meet certain conditions for hardness and very good.
Well, it's hard. Last year when you did this, I piggybacked and got a couple loads, but I hated that stuff. Are you saying that last year when we did this, we got slag instead of stone? I did. Oh, like when you said you piggybacked, I thought you meant... Henry suggested I talk to the guy in the hallway, he wrote down 2A stones and where it was was slag. Okay.
I'd have to ask Henry. He didn't say anything about slag to me, but...
If it meets, if it meets Penn dot go, it means Penn dot go.
He didn't complain about it.
No, he didn't, he didn't.
I don't know, I don't think I can pull it up here. That's a big file. I'll try.
Can we consider one of the other items, Roger P. Paul?
Yeah.
Okay.
How about the...
CRS 23?
E3 oil.
Mm-hmm.
We have three bids for both.
Yes, specialty emulsions.
For $16,030.
And that's with a delivery with a distribution truck. And we have to specify distribution trucks so it will actually go into our tank.
So here a motion. I move we award the bid to Specialty Emulsions Incorporated for $16,030.
I second.
Motion is second, all is in favor, give us consent by saying aye.
Aye.
I have it, so word.
Do you want to go on to the paving or go back? Go on to paving?
They take a while for it to load in the office, so I'm figuring out here it could be a while.
The third item under the highway report is the Litten Hill Spur Lane Hating Project.
Okay, now this was bitted as alternates. You can do, award either alternate or both alternates. And this is with FB modified, which according to our Penn dot representative is allowed. And this is with FB modified, which according to our PNDOT representative is allowed. And I believe you guys talked about this when you went on the road survey? On Linton Hill?
Yeah, the suggestion was to use this instead of the super pave because it holds up better.
It'll hold up better, and then...
More flexible.
Next year, or whenever you guys decide to put a top coat on, I believe, is the plan?
Kind of oil and chip it, yeah.
One of the two. We budgeted $200,000 for Linton Hill by itself.
Just alternate B is...
Alternate B, oh, I'm sorry, that's spur lane.
Okay, so alternate A is Linton Hill Road, alternate B is spur lane.
Yes.
But we want to do both, correct?
That's what Henry liked to do. Spur lane, I believe, is breaking up some?
Yeah, it's pretty bad shape. Do I hear a motion to award the bid?
I make the motion that we award the bid to Headmaker EsalTD for the total price of both. But let me break it down. Alternate A into Linton Hill Road, $90,994.75. Alternate B, which is spur lane, $23,925. Bringing a total of $114,919.75.
I second the motion. All who are in favor give us consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so move.
I do believe that is, Linton Hill by itself, the door portion is over a mile, is it?
About a mile, yeah, a little over a mile.
Yeah, so we're gonna... Probably aggregate.
Okay, the next item I have on the agenda...
It's got slag.
Is the...
It'd be Planning Commission.
Yeah, Planning Commission. Which is the final land development plan for Holman's Landscapes?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, Matt, are you looking for information on the slag?
Yeah, I'm looking for the PNDOT 408.
You might be looking for it on the Harsko. Harsko is the producer of it, but there's kinds of slag.
No, I'm trying to see what the requirements are as to whether PNDOT allows slag, and if so, what's the conditions for it?
One's active and one's inactive.
Yeah.
Which you dealt with.
Yeah.
Still we're moving some of it.
And it could be, what he's producing is fine, so that's...
Why are we talking about slag for?
Because he brought up the slag.
Well, that matters, because we bid this.
We bid aggregate 2A. Which is the, which is PNDOT's designation.
So whether it's slag or whether it's...
Doesn't matter.
As long as it's PNDOT 408, and he has to certify that. What he gave you could be different.
Liquid fuels got it.
Yes.
Approved.
Yes, even though this is not being paid out of Liquid fuels.
But he looked at, he looked at the plan.
Yeah, he's, he's the one who told us aggregate 2A, to use that term.
Yeah, the question is, how much, how much slag or condition for slag? The only way to answer that figure is, I can't get into that. It's popping up, it's too big of a file. Technically, he has to give you the certifications that it meets PNDOT 408 and certify. So if he's providing you with those certifications signed off by PNDOT inspectors, then it has to be... What do you get, so a private citizen doesn't have to...
I'm missing something. We bid aggregate 2A, what does slag have to do with that? Is that a component of it?
It's potential that you could be using slag as part of 2A. 2A could be a slag product. I'm pretty sure they allow.
But it has to be certified either way.
Yeah, it's gonna have to meet certain things and certain... As long as PNDOT, you get the PNDOT certifications, it's fine. Shouldn't be a problem.
So what's our assurance of getting the PNDOT?
Well, that's a condition of your bid. It was bid with the signed 44 documents, right?
Yeah.
It was?
Oh, no, it was not.
What was it bid with?
It was bid with, oh wait, 2As over here. Same way we've been bidding it for the last couple of years.
You didn't use the PNDOT?
No, no. This was being used for, there it is, 2A. We use this form.
So this is the complete set of bid documents right here? Yeah, they have the PNDOT form, C F 4171, certified material means it exceeds all that.
Okay, that states it.
Yeah, so that's in here, so he has to provide it to you.
Which they do every time they deliver.
So in a nutshell, these guys can vote to award that bid if they want to.
They have to certify it with PNDOT, whatever PNDOT allows for slag. This is what they're gonna get.
Okay, so Harsko Metals is the low bidder for 2,000 tons valued at 2A at $22,400.
400, with delivery, yes.
With transportation, correct. So I hear a motion to award to Harsko Metals.
I make the motion that we, that we accept the bid from Harsko Metals for the aggregate 2, in the price of $22,400.01.
I second the motion, all who are in favor give us consent by saying aye.
Aye.
So move. Oh, do we have a recommendation from the Planning Commission on the same old B and Patricia Smith?
No, no, this was, originally I was gonna, if I didn't get an answer back, I was gonna bring it up to you for the next step. But we got this receipt, response back from the letter I sent, which you should have in your old packet. I have that.
Basically, he's responding to contingencies to be completed.
Yes.
Which is based on the original board supervisor's approval of contingency. So you approved it with these outstanding items that need to be met before it's actually signed.
So are we approving it?
Well, he's not asking for that, but he's, in addition to that, one of the things he had to submit is an improvement guarantee, which is this piece here. And I reviewed it and supplied a letter recommending that you approve that.
That's under...
Financial security, but that letter's actually under mine.
Under, yeah.
Whether he's met the other contingencies or not.
No, the ones that are listed here are not the ones that have not been submitted to the township yet.
So the April 8 letter lists the items that are...
That was still outstanding, and this is his response to that letter. With the costs and construction improvements, a stormwater maintenance agreement, and these items.
So I'm still, what all is still outstanding?
Engineer's survey is signed, it's certification of the plan, certification of title and dedicatory statement on the plan, an as-built plan.
Which will be actually built.
Yeah, an ownership maintenance program recordable, in a recordable form. The zoning officer's three comments, and the financial, yeah, the improvement cost there.
And he's saying the zoning officer's kind of photograph?
I haven't seen that on the plan yet.
He's saying he's gonna hand a note to the plan on his file instead of to you?
Okay, you skipped the improvement bond item.
No, it's a, there's, it's the third one down, as-built, oh, I'm sorry, an improvement bond.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
So we sent this letter on April 8 requesting an update on the following items no later than today.
Yeah.
What is the update on those items?
This item, this document here? Do you have that one?
No.
It should, probably under Planning Commission.
He's saying that he's gonna sign the seal of plan when he has every policy in his name, credit committee for reporting, that he will be putting notes on the plan that address the zoning officer's issues in particular. He'll provide the as-built, he will get his letter of credit released until he gets his as-built. And he provided an estimate for financial security, and I recommended it be approved to that amount. Which I think the board needs to act on that amount of financial security.
$7755. Okay.
The letter of credit, KHSB, certified checks.
It's up to the, it's up to the developer.
Up to the developer.
Or the stature.
Any financial institution, you give a letter of credit. So from what I'm seeing is, financial security needs to be approved by the board, that amount set.
Right.
Then he can, if he gets the letter of credit, and they submit the plans with the signatures and seals and the appropriate notes on it, and he said he's gonna do, then the plan technically could be signed by the township for reporting. The issue is, is at this point, the cap, the courthouse will not accept.
So we've...
Because it's been, it's been too far.
Yeah, reapproved.
So we need to reapprove the plan.
I guess you need to wait till he's got everything done in here to reapprove, or...
Well, we're just reapproving the conditions.
Yeah, you just reapproved the plan with the same original conditions, it would seem.
Or, or wait till the conditions are, that approved.
Wait till it matches your check.
Oh, we can go ahead and approve the...
Till he knows what to get. Well, it's actually probably on the back of my letter, too.
What, I don't have, this says a bond is attached, is there a bond? Surveyors, or the, yeah, the surveyor says attached bond accounts for these improvements.
That would be, is financial security, the bond is what he, that's my interpretation. Yeah, he's saying the letter of credit says they're gonna do the improvements.
Where's the letter of credit?
We don't have one yet.
I see.
He just submitted the estimate for us to approve the amount so he can get a letter.
I got you, I got you.
We're that, we're that far behind.
Okay, I got you.
Do I hear a motion to approve the letter of credit amount for $7755?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Mr. May, I second the motion, all who are in favor give us consent by saying aye. Aye, so move. There are motions to table a plan until the various items are met.
I make that motion that we table that until those are processed, the conditions. Which is the April 8 letter of 2015, or the original conditions.
You tell me, because those are left, those are the ones that are left from the original conditions that haven't been completed.
That's just telling you which one he hasn't completed to this date. He's met the rest of them.
So this letter is just an amendment to those conditions, what is...
That was still outstanding.
This is the opening, so the conditions what are outstanding, according to the letter dated April 8, 2015, from Burkitt Enterprises.
Okay.
Does that motion satisfy the need to itemize in the motion?
No, you're sorry, as long as you reference it.
I second the motion, all who are in favor give us consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose? So move.
All right.
I'm not the Dmail.
Okay, yes, this is the plan that Mr. Benner was referencing earlier.
The large one you had in front of you earlier.
Yeah, it's somewhere over there. No, that's the other one. The rolled up one. They're asking to have this request for a planning waiver and non-building declaration signed and sent into DEP, as they are not proposing any buildings up there. The prospective owner, new owner, would be putting in an orchard. You were there.
I was there, that's what he said. I like the T-shirt.
I'm not sure I understand. If the property's gonna be sold, why would Mr. Maladino need approval for a 17?
No, this is...
It's not a subject, it's a DEP mailer, just to say, we don't have to put a subject system up there.
It's a non-building waiver, form would be, that has to win the DEP to get approval. It's gonna take about 30 days for the kid to back and say, "Yeah, it's okay." By that time, we may be moving forward with the plan.
And basically, you're giving me permission to sign it and send it in?
If the plan doesn't get approved, it doesn't really mean anything.
Do I hear a motion to authorize Helen to send it to mail?
Yeah.
Sign it and send it in.
And there's gonna be no construction, the property is going to be agricultural.
That is what the plan says.
Yeah, there's no...
There should be a note on the plan stating that.
No, there'd be no building, no subject.
It might be on the front page.
Probably on the front page. Up at the top, center. Is that it?
It might be at the bottom there.
No, that's a non-building waiver.
Okay.
No, non-building waiver. And does it say what the intention, I guess they don't have to say what the...
I thought it said down on the bottom notes.
It probably does down there, but that's the non-building waiver where he's saying nothing will be built.
I make the motion then that Helen be given permission to sign and send the waiver?
The waiver.
Okay, the planning waiver.
DEP waiver.
The DEP waiver, form number 3800-FM, and a whole lot of numbers on it.
I second the motion, all who are in favor give us consent by saying aye.
Aye.
So move.
That's all the Planning Commission I have. Yeah.
Highway report, Carpenter zoning board docket, 2015-02.
Yeah, that's Smith's. That's it, yeah.
At least one.
What's the zoning hearing docket?
The zoning hearing docket is, Mr. Carpenter is requesting a variance from the zoning hearing board to place a garage on his property. Where he wants to place it is, according to the zoning officer, in front of the house. So what you guys just have to decide is whether you wish to be a party to the hearing or not.
The planning commission looked at it, despite its facial unique characteristic on this property, it seemed, that there didn't seem to be any other place to put it on. Trust me, we had at least a half hour plus discussion on various different options. They looked at it pretty thoroughly.
Yeah, they're recommending that there's, there's no problem moving forward with this request.
Whether it's granted or not, it's the zoning hearing board. Whether it's granted or not is up to the zoning hearing board. In the planning commission's opinion, seemed to be something that you probably didn't want to get involved with, because there really didn't seem to be any other option for him to be able to put a garage on his property. There's nothing located in there. Subject systems.
Well, right, easement.
Easements and other things that he's got crisscrossing his property. There's no space to put this garage.
So absent a motion to be involved, we just, by default, are not involved?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brian, do you see any request to be involved in this?
Yeah, I don't see any where we should be involved.
Okay, moving on.
And then you have the zoning officer's report in front of you. Yes.
What I say I might have is the Warner portable toilet?
Yes, Mr. Warner's asking for a Porter John for the days he has the dinners, and he has a list of the dinners here. You granted this last year, we just need... Whether you guys are gonna grant it this year or not.
Do I hear a motion to grant this Warner the permission to have a portable toilet?
What's the alternative?
This is in addition to his holding tank. Well, he has enough woods, he has enough woods around him. You should have, but in the old packet.
I'll make the motion that we approve the portable toilet for Mr. Warner.
I second.
Second, but Brian, all those areas consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. I put the, you guys granted at the roadmaster's meeting for the Duncan Girl Scouts to have a portable toilet. This is just the contract for it?
He's girl salt.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So it's already been approved, this is just adopted, it's a project?
Yes, and I'm gonna have to need a signature on it.
Oh, we don't need to take collaboration?
I don't believe so.
It's already been approved.
Okay, and then Marstella has a holding tank that's up for renewal. This is every two years. You should have this in your new packet, that the owner has signed it. They gave the information on the, how many holes in, all that.
I see, I see the cleaner signed it, but I don't see the owner's side.
Uh, should, I thought I gave you the new one. Let me see where's my signatures. Signature's Marstella, here. No, I, there. He signed it.
Does the cleaner provide an inspection on that?
Well, they did, that they did, did it on April fourteenth, twenty fifteen, but no, that's not one of the requirements, unless the supervisors decide to put that as a requirement.
The DEP doesn't arbitrarily inspect this.
Not that I know of, it's the RSEO.
Typically, the hallies will look, will do a visual inspection of the holding tank and septic tank. Obviously, if a valve broken, or something else, it's obvious, they pick those up. But I don't know if you're looking specifically at the water, anything in the area. I'd like to thank you, though, Helen.
Uh, let's see, they're saying it's seven hundred and... Yeah, seven fifty gallon.
What's the ordinance?
Approximate percent of load.
Oh, that's a percentage.
Okay. Seven fifty gallon. I don't see that, no.
Is there any ordinance in the township that says after a system sits vacant for so many years that it's inspected before it can be used and put back in operation?
I'm thinking. I don't think that's ever come up before. I think it'd be SEO would, yeah, I'd have to check on that.
That property was vacant for a long, long time and sat there, and they were gonna require me to hook on and cross the, the gas line with the pressurized sewer line. New homes can't be constructed on a holding tank, and after that's sat vacant for so long, that might have been considered moving the property to...
When you say connected to the sewer, are you talking about the sewer that was on that property?
No.
Our sewer?
Yes. A pressurized line up along the schoolhouse road.
I don't remember that on this side. Do you see it on the other?
Do you do down to, I think it was down to above where the recycling is right now, the steel? That was the discussion when I was looking at that property, that I had to sign on down there.
Okay, I... No, 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 it's been confirmed.
Do I hear a motion to approve the tank?
I don't know, was that with the sewer authority?
I'll make that motion, is there a second? Is there a second to the motion?
There is a question.
Third one.
If we pass this tonight, can we go back and make it a condition that it can be inspected?
Can he make that a condition now?
He could make it, yeah, he could make it a condition now.
Yeah, 'cause it's basically a new contract.
So we would send Lenny down to, or, or...
Could do that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like, I'd like to amend the motion to include that the tank be inspected.
And with that amendment, do you second the motion?
Yes.
I accept the amendment, all those areas consent by saying aye.
And you want our SEO to do it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I can do that.
I have a question on that. Who pays for that? I'm the owner of the township.
Normally, if we send him out to do something, we pay, but in this...
Why should the resident, all the residents pay for something, move for someone else?
Yeah, I agree with you.
It's a condition of his approval, he either accepts a condition or his, his tank, it's not approved.
Okay.
He either agrees that he's gonna get inspected, or he pays for it.
I think that needs to be made clear.
Okay.
It costs, yeah.
With that motion, with that motion, then, I guess, do we need to amend it where?
Well, now, wait a second. And I respect what's being suggested. I heard an hour and a half ago, everybody wants uniformity. That means every time your SEO goes out, you're gonna charge that landowner. That's what's being suggested. If we're gonna be uniform with everything in the enforcement, which is what was argued here an hour and a half ago, what's being said here is if Lenny Sizer goes out and inspects that tank, that landowner has to pay for it. That means that any time Lenny Sizer goes out and inspects anything, the landowner's gonna pay for it.
And you make it a condition that, that, that landowner is responsible to have it inspected?
No, you can do that, I'm not suggesting you can't, and I commend you for that, but what I'm saying is, we heard an hour and a half ago, a yawn and a cry, that we don't enforce things equally. That means that any time somebody's gonna send your SEO to a particular site, that person's gonna pay for it. And I suspect if you do that, you're gonna have some people out here saying, whoa, wait a second, what do you pay him for? Why should I have to pay him? He's your employee, our tax dollars go for him. So as you, as you consider that suggestion being made to you, I have no problem with you doing it, just keep in mind what's gonna be said the next time it comes up.
How about commercial versus urban?
Can't do that. You can't do that.
PPNO does it.
PPNO's a private industry, private, it's a private industry. I mean, out here, we argued an hour and a half ago that everything's gotta be uniform, now we have something that's gonna be made uniform, and now we have people that don't like that.
How about sorority?
It can be. It can be. But that's a different, but that's, that's a, that's a different use. Well, the question is, is paying for it, that's what's being argued. Then you're gonna have the argument that he used somebody that he paid to never look at it. I mean, you're either gonna have...
Just so you know. No, not now.
What's charged? What's Lenny charged?
Uh, sixty-five an hour. Okay, that's what he charged, let me see, I'll go to check. Yeah, sixty-five an hour.
When Lenny Sizer looked at that conditional use and wrote his report, did he charge a fee to it first of all?
Oh, it goes to the applicant.
Okay, the applicant paid Lenny Sizer for that report that he made?
He paid, we took it out of the escrow. That's out of the escrow. He got, he complained, gentlemen, we paid for it.
Let me just give you an example. DEP got a complaint about Frank Boyer sent our SEO out to look at it, it cost the township a hundred and thirty bucks to the Boyer property, Mr. Boyer did not pay, Lenny Sizer, we did. That's what I'm saying, it just, I mean, I don't care how you wanna do it, that's up to you guys, I don't wanna create a situation where we are handpicking who we're gonna charge and who we aren't gonna charge.
Sometimes you like your meetings better.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, that's a good point, exactly.
So in this case, you guys pay for it, so you can have a discussion, is that how you wanna do it?
Can you provide us the ordinance?
That would be...
You'd almost have to create something that says any time the SEO does the following, it shall be paid for by the landowner, and then itemize those things, that the landowner's gonna be responsible.
Yeah.
That's a good idea, that's a good idea.
Oh, we have a rate schedule, it's part of our resolution.
As is, yeah. Good point, good. Yeah, thank you.
Do I want you to park and wreck board report?
We're leaving that motion as it was?
Yes.
Okay. I'll get the piece. No, Cameron's not here, so she just submitted the report. She's looking to have a, she's calling it a community garden event, but basically, a craft show, a flea market type thing, where they're gonna sell spots, and she's hoping to get some bands up here to play during that day, like she did last year, she had the bands up here.
Do we need to approve that event, Helen?
Oh, I don't know. No, he's saying no. Yeah, and the next senior launch is the May fifteenth. Oh. Come here, SEO, SEO, SEO. There you go. I don't have anything, unless you do, Hannah. Your board?
Can I, can I just quickly clarify why we did what we did about the SEO? Let, let, the discussion that we had about who pays for the SEO, it came on the heels of the SEO's report. Somebody complained to DEP, DEP sent our SEO out to the property of Mr. Frank Boyer on two occasions, it cost the, it cost sixty-five dollars each of the occasions for a total of a hundred and thirty dollars. Township paid that, Mr. Boyer did not. We didn't require the landowner to pay for that inspection. So the question came up, well, do we, in this case, call, have Mr. Marstella pay for it when we didn't require Mr. Boyer to pay for it? And the idea is to, to keep uniformity now, I believe the board is gonna look into creating some sort of uniformity where they can and cannot charge in the form of an ordinance.
Did we see anything written in municipal authority? I don't think we did.
No, we did not.
That's a good report.
Okay, secretaries report.
Okay, the first thing I have that really needs action, our heater for this room and the other room, heater, air conditioner, broke, the main panel needs repaired for it to work, that's five hundred dollars.
Five thousand?
Oh, no, that's five hundred there. I'm sorry. Five hundred dollars. The schedule was to replace this unit with the split systems, like in the police office, and I'm just, do we wanna spend the five hundred dollars to get that fixed, and then the money to put the split systems in?
And what was the pricing of the split?
Well, we'd have to go out for quotes and all, but last, for the police and the authority, it was sixty-eight hundred, but that's with two outside units and two inside un, and the two inside units.
So sixty-eight hundred, roughly, that would cover both?
Approximately, and in this room, we might be able to only have to have one condenser thing outside, and the two units inside, so it might be a little cheaper, might, we have to go out and quote that.
What about next door, Helen?
No, that, it would be for that, the authority, I mean, for the township office and this office.
Sixty-eight hundred bucks, roughly?
Roughly.
Based on what you got last year?
Yeah.
Which is under the bidding.
Yeah, that's under...
Actually, under the quote.
You can work, you make phone calls, yeah.
Yeah, close.
When was these two rooms scheduled to get done?
Well, I was thinking at the end of the summer, before that thing went out, but so I'm asking to move it up.
So it isn't a budget for this, it isn't a budget for this year?
Yes.
It's just we're moving it up sooner than later.
Instead of spending the five hundred dollars and then replacing?
Replacing.
Yeah.
Does that also control the air conditioning?
Yes, it will control the air conditioning, and let's...
We've had no heat either.
Yeah, correct.
We've, we've had heat. But we, I'm trying to think, that will bring down the propane cost, 'cause we won't be using it. But yeah, we'd have to go out on quotes and...
I make the motion then that we go ahead and advertise and put out quotes?
Well...
We don't even have, no.
We don't have to advertise.
No, it's below, it's below the advertising level, we can, we can do it by way of phone quotes.
Yeah.
She must call three comparable places to get phone quotes.
I make the motion then that give Helen permission to go ahead and seek the quotes for the replacement of the heating and air conditioning units for the secretary's office.
And this office.
And the board of supervisors' office, or community room, whatever you wanna call this room.
Meeting room.
I second the motion. All those areas consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then, the rest is just more information. We got our property liability dividend of three thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars and seventy-four cents. Our workers' comp dividend came in at eleven thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and seventeen cents. I gave you the handout from the cap tax meeting. If you look at the income statements, it looks in the negative, but cap tax gets the majority of their money in the fourth quarter. So it has been balancing out, and actually, last year, we were in the black. They were, they did not pay as much as we expected, especially for LST, and that's because they changed to a new computing system, and so they're supposed to catch up. LST came in at fifty dollars for the first quarter, so that was, for the fourth quarter of last year, so we're supposed to get what's out, due to us for that, plus the first quarter of this in May. But they, they had a learning curve, and they had to, it had to take time to just adjust everything from the old system to the new system.
So the additional monies that we did not always get will become...
That's what they told us. Whether it happens, we'll see. At the conference, some of the things that might affect the township, the state police bill is being reintroduced. This is where if you don't have your own police department, the state police can charge townships. I haven't seen the bill yet, so I don't know what their numbers are, but when this came out a couple of years ago, we were around two, about a quarter, two hundred and fifty thousand, around there is what we would've had to pay, if we didn't have any police, and it was based on a certain amount times your population. Our liquid fuels money will be increasing next to... Our liquid fuels money will be increasing next year. And another round for residential sprinklers in new homes is being introduced with the UCC code. Which is not as expensive in the cities as it is in the worlds, because then you have to have a tank-
Fesherized tank.
Fesherized tank. Supposedly it's supposed to help on fires, but when they go to a fire, they shut off the electricity. So the pump don't work. So that bill's being reintroduced. PSS will not increase, increase the dues. The PennDOT has that Greenlight Go grant for intersections. And PennDOT is looking at a program called Bridge Bundling. There has been a limited pilot program so far that has shown progress. Basically, PennDOT would take a county and look at all the types, all the bridges that need to be replaced, and the ones that have the same type of structure would be bundled together to, uh, go out on bid and all. That would save on the engineering cost, because they only have to do that once instead of for like five bridges or six bridges. And then, you'll like this one, Lee. DEP secretary also brought up about the public water systems, if you're on a well. Basically, if you're supplying, if you're on a well, and you have twenty-five people for sixty days, or twenty-five connections to that well, and if a business has a water fountain that twenty-five people can access, you would need a permit.
Let's come over to the department, too.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's what they were saying. The Chesapeake Bay, this matter will be making news in the future. And MS four will be heavier implemented. It seems that there's concern that Pennsylvania may not meet their quota, yeah, that's the word he used, quota, for the Chesapeake Bay, which means they'll come back to, come back harder up the line. Which means MS fours may not get the waivers anymore, and there is no money to help municipalities with the MS fours.
So another unfunded mandate?
Yeah.
Another one?
Another one.
Continuation of the one for oh-three.
There was a suggestion of a stormwater authority being considered in municipalities, but that's up to the individual municipalities.
And you already have one, you could probably amend your authority.
Thanks a lot.
And that's all I have for my report.
And we've already covered yet, but my report at this point, so must there be something else?
Good report, excellent. You'll get old someday.
I am, they is.
Tell your birthday. How old are you? Happy birthday.
No, they, they did, they, they agreed to the finance and they're gonna pay all the rest of it until everything is done.
We're out there doing the traffic study on Cove Road. We did lose an officer to a full-time assailant, so I'm requesting the, to hire Tim Green that we interviewed earlier this month. And we're also, like, purchase a vehicle to replace our aging vehicle. And we have enough money in our account, we put it over in escrow, plus the savings we did for fuel and everything. So we don't have to borrow any money for it. And they are willing to give us ten thousand dollars on the, uh, trading on our old vehicle. And Cliff and I will be moving all the equipment from that old vehicle to the new vehicle, so we don't have to.
And which one has the aging vehicle being?
The marked, the marked, yeah, the marked SUV. We would get the exact same thing, that's true, Hoffman Ford. Yeah, CoStar, yeah, CoStar's got a discount, plus Hoffman always gives us a big discount, too. And then, like I said, he's giving ten thousand on it.
Is there any crap money available?
On the vehicles. Not that I know of, no. Vehicle has a hundred and five thousand miles on it, ten thousand dollars, and Hoffman's a pretty good, good deal. We were on the other side, we were on the other side of the road, we could get money from the, I think casinos, I don't think-
And what is the price of your hospital?
The, the total price would be seventeen thousand six hundred and three dollars. No, they, they buy police cars, they said, they bought a warro, a warro.
So you need approval for the DFW parade?
And, yeah, that's a letter just for the permits and stuff, we're sending them to.
So what specific are you asking for permission for?
No, the, the, every year they have the, their parade, and we just say it's okay in our, in our jurisdiction, we already got that from Burl.
Okay.
From the Burl, and we just need a letter from the, from the township, too. And then I can complete everything and get the permits or the request signed and get it to PennDOT for approval.
Okay. So I make the motion that we prepare and sign the letter, chief's request. I hear second?
I second.
Send the saying aye?
Aye.
And the vehicle? Do you need a motion yet for the vehicle?
I, I don't know, I, I, it wouldn't hurt, I mean, it doesn't, we, we have the money, we can purchase it, but sure, yeah, if you approve our purchase of the, the vehicle, and also approve the hiring of Tim Green for-
Let's, let's take care of the officer first. I move that we grant permission to hire, was it Tim?
Tim Green.
Green? As a police officer?
I second.
Motion made with a second, hold your favor, read your consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. You're having a motion, giving approval to purchase a new police car.
Is that Peggy Beck?
Hmm?
We have to advertise it.
It's CoStar's.
Seventeen thousand six hundred and three dollars, yes.
I second.
I didn't make the motion.
Oh, you made it.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, let's, you make the motion, sir.
I hear a second?
I second.
Motion made with a second, hold your favor, read your consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, so moved. Anything else?
No, we have, we have a contract with Humane Society, we'll look into this, though, see if, if we don't euthanize the animal. However they do it, it sounds like this, and they have people on staff, too.
Twenty percent. Apparently, effort was made to contact both the park team and the Humane Society.
Well, we have a key for Humane Society. I have very, very short, as I said. He would've benefited if he, if he contacted me, if that came up, that he had to, had to do something. But I believe there was a civilian that volunteered, I believe, one of your people that volunteered to take the animal.
After we believed that, all the other options were exhausted.
So your report?
I only have one to report, it's, it's one of two things. There's a, I think it's by profession, an engineer out of the southeastern part of Pennsylvania, that has a history of going to different municipalities, making requests under the right to know. And he made two requests here in the township, one of which was granted by the Office of Open Records, another one was granted in part and denied in part. But what was granted in each of the two was a requirement that the township turn over to him a contract that does not exist. The motor vehicle code requires municipalities to have their speed timing devices tested on an annual basis under thirty-three sixty-eight D, I believe, in the motor vehicle code. And municipalities free to go wherever they want. They, most people go to a place called Rayvols, but alls you have to do is go to any of the certified places certified by PennDOT, and there's no contract, you just take the vehicle. This guy wants contracts that we have with these various testing stations, and we don't have any contracts. We don't, it's like you pull into a service station, fill up with gas.
Or inspection, they're gonna-
Or inspection. And, and so, the Office of Administrative, oh, the, the Office of Open Records required the township to turn over non-existent contracts to Mr. Drack, which we can't do, so we took an appeal to each of these two to the Court of Common Pleas. And now it dovetails into what you were saying, it just dawned on me. There have been so few of these filed at the county level. With all due respect to the county, not having experienced them, they knew how to accept them and record them and document them, but to move it through the pipeline, they weren't sure how to do it. I suggested, in the Drack case, that I develop a proposed court order to be signed by the judge, which I believe, the last I heard Wednesday, when I filed Drack Monday, as I heard today, when I was up there, they think that proposed court order's gonna be acceptable to the judge, and if it is, then I attach it to both Drack and I can attach it to yours, that's what Ruth is talking about. Because they don't, they don't know how to-
The borough had one go to the Court of Common Pleas within the last six months, it took less than two months, so.
Now, I'm just telling you what, what I was told by the, by the pathontary, you talk to Ruth, I talk to Ruth. So that's what the status of, of that is.
And with that, we got a consensus to get these done, I, can I get an approval of those, or, what's the word? Get them to ratify the consensus?
Yeah.
Yeah. For him to do the appeals.
Unless you don't want to do them, then, then we're gonna have to somehow supply a non-existent contract, which I'm not sure how to do. And when you even read the, when you even read from the Office of Open Records, the rationale, it is nonsensical. And I put that in the appeal. I said, this is totally absurd and nonsensical. They said, it is, it's clear that no contract exists. Therefore, since there's no written or oral contract or otherwise, a contract has to be provided.
There's not access for maintenance records?
No, no.
No, no, we gave those.
What's that?
Send them a blank piece of paper. I was gonna send them an empty envelope.
I mean, it's-
So we need to make the motion then to approve for you to appeal.
I've already done it, I just need you to ratify the appeal.
You're ratifying the consensus that you gave us? When we called into the consensus for these, we just need your, and the record that you agreed to this.
So I make the motion that we ratify-
The filing of the two appeals.
The filing of the two appeals.
I second the motion. Hold your favor, read your consent by saying aye?
Aye.
Saying aye, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
Okay, you have that, um-
I'm sorry. I, I wanna bring up-
No, that's great, bring up, the last time I ran anywhere was about twenty years ago.
Helen brought up about PSP possibly charging the township. How long's that building out there?
Well, that's, this is about the fifth, uh, fifth introduction of it. There's a lot of pushback against it, because municipalities couldn't afford to do it. I mean, if we didn't have police departments, you have to pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this municipality?
And doesn't it limit, isn't it limited by the size of the community?
Can be, depends upon how the bill, what they put in the bill.
Yeah, I just haven't got the bill yet to see.
But it doesn't affect us, because we have-
It usually doesn't affect us.
No, no.
Well, they, they haven't submitted. They're, they're saying you're gonna, they're gonna-
They're going, he said it was gonna be re-
They haven't introduced it as, because I-
I don't believe so.
No.
No.
It's in the making, it's good.
Yeah.
What I was referencing, wish or choose, I, they'll even run buttery.
I sprained my right ankle, that's why I can't get, I can't get any of these up, please.
On the building permit, there's nothing major. This Roar Real Estate is Maguire's Ford, they got their permits.
Which one?
Uh, Roar Real Estate, that's Maguire's Ford, the, for the new dealership. They got their permit issued. And that's all there, Corey Messner was the one that, on Hilltop, that was in violation, he has complied. And everything else is just normal, siding, new home.
The correspondence?
Okay, the first one is John Parish.
John or Josh?
I'm sorry, Josh. Uh, this is the Notice of Nature Conservancy Grant to the PA Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. They are requesting us to, um, send a letter of support. And they put the draft on the very back of what they would like us to say. There's a whole, altogether, it's three hundred and fifty-two acres, but that's located in Penn, Rye, and Marysville.
Does this involve a piece of land that's for sale, four eleven and fifteen?
Yeah, the one right past the Marysville border?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yes, yeah.
Is that property owner aware of this?
I don't know that.
Because it could very well limit-
How much?
How much of that property can be used, or-
Yeah.
If it can be used at all.
They want to preserve the forester's headwaters, hill slopes, ridge tops, to protect green hubs, linkages, riparian corridors. The fee simple acquisition. Well, they're asking to purchase, I'm assuming that, that, yeah. So I'm assuming that he would know. But I can contact Josh and find out.
Print this on the back, other page.
This isn't the name to purchase all of that, so.
Yeah. And that's why they need the grant, I guess. Right behind them.
This would be another point.
Yeah, this right there.
Right there, clean the point.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, includes all the cove. Goes not just that, yeah.
To the top of the mountain.
To the top of the mountain?
Basically, they, they live the properties in burks, to the point of the mountain.
I moved the table to give you more information about what they really wanted to do and how it's gonna affect the private property owners.
Okay.
The whole cove?
Not the, no, 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 not the whole cove.
This is a portion here, right here.
Oh, well, that's always lying here.
No, 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 no.
It's the point of the mountain here.
Yeah, okay, I see it now, I see it now.
It's a little, it's just a point.
The forest hill sign on both sides, the mirrors going up and down here.
If you're looking at, we're looking at, it looks like it's the whole area.
Well, it is, it's a big area. It is, it's the whole point.
See here, they're showing that.
Yeah, but this is going all the way up to the Indiana. This is almost going up the furies.
It's a piece of private property, made in person decision.
It's just a little piece right here.
Yeah.
That's what we're talking about, just a little piece.
Okay.
And again, you know, it's, I, I make the motion that we go ahead and send a letter of support. I make the motion that we go ahead and send a letter of support to Josh Parish, referencing to the April 13th, 2015 correspondence.
Are you getting to take open stand?
Okay, okay.
Okay, email address.
All those in favor of their consent by saying aye.
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 Okay. The next thing I have is Pligot Proxy for voting at the annual meeting and the election of trustees. They gave a, just the names of trustees and all that. Those are my originals.
So what are you moving to do?
Either grant the proxy or tell them who you want to vote for, or someone goes up and votes. So if you want to go up to State College... We normally send proxies.
I move we send the proxy.
I second that motion.
Motion made the second. All those in favor of their consent by saying aye. Aye.
Okay. Next one is the Perry County Commissioners. They're telling us about the Perry County Solid Waste Plan. It's ready for public review and comments. It gives us a web page to go to to look at, to watch, to see what the solid waste plan is. And then there will be a public review and comment in the Commissioners' Meeting Room on June 17th at 3:00 PM.
Give that for information.
Mm-hmm. The next is the Sesquonada School District.
Just a question here.
Yes.
Can we post this on the website, on the Township website?
Yeah.
Okay, if you can do that, please, that may make same user access for...
For people, yeah. Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, Sesquonada School District. They have a building permit application in process right now for replacing the HVAC system to this elementary school, the high schools, the administration building, and the alternate education building, and to replace the boiler for the middle school. They're asking for us to waive the partial application fee for that. They mentioned a zoning officer in here, and I called Lenny, and they never contacted him. And this type of work doesn't need a zoning permit. So I don't know where that last paragraph came from. We don't know what the cost is going to be yet for the application fee because Mr. Hollenbaum still needs more information. He's trying to get from them to review the plans. There is a formula for commercial projects. And it's, it's a hefty bill right now. There's no doubt about it. I don't have the formula in my head, but it's by square footage. And unfortunately, when you're talking HVAC and you're talking the building, any square footage, so... They're asking for a partial waiver, but I don't see how you can give a waiver right now if you don't know the numbers.
I move to table until we get more information.
Okay.
My second.
Motion the second. All those in favor of their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. The next thing I have is the G.A.R., the Greater Heshberg Association of Realtors. They are having a breakfast for municipal officials on June 17th at the Radisson by the Camp Hill Bypass. Basically, they go in and discuss issues of mutual concern for development in different, in townships. I, I don't know. I'm trying to think who went. He was supposed to go a couple of years ago. If you wish to go, we just need to RSVP.
I would like to attend this.
Okay.
Should I move that Brian be allowed to attend? You hear a second?
Do you have a motion?
No, there's no money involved.
No, okay.
Okay, and that's all the correspondence.
Old Business Act 457.
Yes, that, I gave you that last month. You wanted to table it, to look at it. Basically, it's like a 401, 401K?
Yeah.
Yeah, 401K. I also suggested we get Diane Calhoun to come in and talk to you guys about it because she knows a lot more than I do about it. This would replace our pension plans. And it would be contribution by the employees, and you guys would have a choice whether to contribute towards it or not. So I'm just asking...
Do we have the luxury of waiting to have her come in and talk to us?
Yes, yeah.
All right.
Table again?
I move to table until she comes in and makes presentation.
My second.
Okay, do you want me to call her and try to get her in in May or June? I can ask her for a couple of days and then get with you guys.
Would she be coming to a regular meeting or just...
I would say probably a special.
Special.
Okay.
I mean, we'd have to advertise it.
Yeah.
I only have two days open in May.
Okay.
May 14th and May 27th. My June, my June is pretty much open at this point.
Okay.
What was the first day in May?
14th.
I should be off before. Will there be an evening meeting?
It can. I can, normally...
I couldn't make the evening.
Okay. Well, we could, normally every time she came in talking about pensions before is in the afternoons.
Okay. That'd be all right.
Two later? Tell me approximate time.
I can, I can schedule my day any day, anyway, that day, so...
Okay.
As long as I know, as long as I know soon.
Oh, yeah, as soon as I find out.
Two or three.
Okay.
Three would be better for me.
Yeah.
Okay. And the revised website is the next thing. That was, they would come in and redo our website. But this was, this one would also have access to Twitter, Facebook. What is that? I can't think of the other one. But they would also have the option of, people could come on and pick a page, say they want this page to be notified when it's updated. It would send a message out to them. And like I told you last month, the bad part is $6,000. So this is consideration, do you want to hear them come in and talk about it closer to budget time?
I'm throwing a few months away from budget time.
I'm trying not to think of that. But, well, I'm thinking like maybe June, July, sometime like that. I can get a couple of dates when they would be able to come down and talk to us and...
Okay, let's shift to the June.
Okay.
If you can.
Just to see what they could do for us and...
And you say it was $6,000.
That's what they were quoting me, $6,000. That would be setting it up, saving it to cloud and all that stuff. Yeah, yeah.
Now, is that, would they be maintaining the site?
No, we would be able to update it.
We'll still be, we'll still be...
Ourselves. And actually, the way he described it to me, it'd be easier than what I'm doing now.
Correct. We can actually bring it into the 21st century.
Yes. Yes. Okay, the next thing under Old Business I have is the letter for the EMS. Okay, I know I have that letter. Okay. I got, we got a call from Esther this afternoon. And we also, she asked us if, us being Henry, he was in the office when she called, if she would, if we thought about the medic that would also be assigned with this. And, because Medic 81 is with you guys now, and right now it's Medic 83 or 86?
6.
6, which is East Princeboro.
No, Hampton.
Oh, Hampton, okay. But she basically wanted to know which medic we would also want with this.
Okay, currently, we have what medic?
It's Cumberland County Medic 86. Their station that's, uh, no, uh, Hampton Township.
Come on, I know I have that.
Uh, no, it's down, uh, Turp, Turp Hill, I can't remember where that is.
Who's that?
The south, the third mountain.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I'll clear this. Yeah.
And that's currently our medic unit.
Probably the road south.
From what?
Burley.
South, yes.
And Marysville.
Yeah. So basically, we need to get, I need to get permission to send the letter, which, there's the draft. And also to put Medic 81, if you wish, on it. Short and sweet.
Medic 81 is who?
Perry Medic 81 is the ALS unit stationed in Duncan, here in Penn Township. West Shore, or now Holy Spirit EMS, have proposed the current layout, recommending Medic 86. A large part of the reason there is if the Perry Medic 81 truck, the truck that's in our station currently covers Newport, Millerstown, Liverpool, Shermansdale, a large part of the county. And the idea is that if we would ride on the scene to transport patient, we don't want to sit and wait on the scene for the paramedic coming from behind us. So if they're coming from our station, they should ride with us. But if they're, if they're coming from out, clearly calling Newport, Liverpool, et cetera, I think the mentality was to have the 86 truck come up and ride it somewhere in the way to hospital and maybe get the patient started along the way to the hospital. I, I don't see any reason to change from what's there now, to have 86 continue to be the responding unit. It's still Holy Spirit EMS, formerly West Shore, still the same company. They seem to have it, I think, laid out to kind of optimize their response. They have more depth of coverage in Cumberland County. They have a truck at Holy Spirit Hospital. They have a truck at, in Auburn Township. They have truck, several trucks in LeMoyne, McCannxburg Borough, Middlesex Township, so they have, I'm sorry, Silverstone Township, so they have more backup plan in Cumberland County.
So the recommendation is Medic 81?
81, which is yours. No, he's saying 86.
No.
I know, that's a draft.
The letter says it.
I haven't seen that.
No, you haven't. It was done this afternoon.
But you're recommending 86.
I, I'm, I'm saying I don't think there's any point or any, any good reason to change that at this point.
The county is... That's what's currently serving...
Correct.
That area anyway.
Correct.
The county is asking you for a recommendation on who you would like.
Yes.
Correct, yes.
No, there, nobody made a recommendation.
Well, we're looking at the letter here that's stating the opposite of what he stated. Okay, so...
When I, yeah, when I did that draft, Brian, I figured 81 is ours, so...
Yes, correct. No, 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 I'm just, we're just looking for clarification ourselves. So that's why we're asking questions, correct?
Yeah, what's the advantage again of having 86?
86 is already covering...
It's currently covered by 86.
As first due.
Purdix area. Yes. Okay, yes. The only, the only advantage in my mind is that if they're out on call or flirting a call, Liverpool, Millerstown, Newport area, they're behind us. You know, they're, they're kind of playing catch-up. And it's much easier to interface with a truck coming from the south because that's where we're transporting 90% of the time, going to West Shore Hospital, Holy Spirit Hospital, Harford Hospital most of the time. So rather than sit and wait for a truck to maybe come from behind us, I think West Shore mentality has always been that way. All of Marysville response was with 86. But the company, Holy Spirit EMS, West Shore EMS, is all, is all, is all one. They're providing the unit up here in our station and the unit in Hampton Township. I have no objection to changing it, but I don't, I don't know if there's any great advantage.
Well, she was asking which one was for first due.
I think what, and to elaborate what Craig said earlier, the amount of calls that Medic 81 handles and the territory they cover...
Correct.
If they were sitting in the fire, or in the EMS station with Duncan EMS at all times, the response would probably be beneficial. But for the majority of the time, they probably aren't in the firehouse. They're probably, or in their station. They're probably responding from areas they're coming back for calls to. And like, like he said, with the medic coming from Hampton Township, down up 8, or north on 81, north on 1115, the EMS unit will have to go that way to go to the medical facility and not wait on a medic unit to get to the ambulance before they can be charged to the hospital.
Yep.
And that was a lot of the reason, if you recall, when New Bloomfield's Advanced Life Support went into service, we discussed that briefly here. And my recommendation at that time was not to use New Bloomfield for Penn Township because they're always coming from behind us. They're currently in Bloomfield Borough, possibly Seville or Northeast Madison Township, you know, coming from behind us. So the idea is to stabilize patients, start the basic life support treatment and begin transfer to a hospital.
Okay.
And that's, I mean, that's something I, you know, I, I think Esther...
86.
Esther, as the, as the 911 Center Director, that could be changed later on. That could, you know, maybe some, some communication with West Shore with Holy Spirit EMS would be appropriate. See if they have any, any change in that recommendation. But like I said, they, they've looked at it a little more globally with their areas. They cover the majority of eastern Cumberland County, the exception of Laurel Island Township. And, you know, they, they provide the majority of the population coming to Perry County.
And that box number was...
209.
209.
So you're saying, Craig, that this should be Medic 86? Medic 86 is what's there currently, yes.
Yeah.
I don't know what's in the letter, but currently... Being notified effective May 1, 2015, that Medic says...
81.
81 will be first due response for the Purdix area, Penn Township. You're suggesting that that be 86? Yes.
Yes.
And that Duncan EMS will be first due response for the Purdix area, Penn Township.
Yeah.
Should we include, I think we should include that box number.
That's fine. I didn't know that.
Box 209.
209.
209, okay.
Esther, I, I could have some dialogue with the executive director at Holy Spirit and say that it came up for discussion. At this point, basically, I think you're saying no change, which I think some input from them would be warranted before that would be...
Well, we're actually recommending for it to be changed to 86.
It is 86 now.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, keep it 86.
Yeah.
Okay. So you're going to put the box number in and...
And change it to...
81, 86.
Yes.
Is there a motion out of fact?
Yeah, I make a motion that we send the letter to Mr. Bell at the County Emergency Control Center, referencing to our vote decision last month.
Yeah.
Yeah, last month. Okay, and to include the box number, which is 209, and also that the medic number would be 86 to service as first due response.
Okay.
The motion?
Yes.
I second the motion. All those in favor of their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay.
I have a question now. Let, uh, let go, Marysville goes out of business tomorrow.
Well, I was just getting ready to say to Helen that...
I'm going to fax it, or email, fax it tomorrow because they're going to get it. They're going to have something in their hand tomorrow.
First thing in the morning.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that was already discussed.
Helen, they can get that first thing in the morning.
Oh, they have to. They have to.
Why did we wait till Duncan sent that?
Because we had to have the motion to send it up, and we didn't have the motion to send the letter.
When you vote to pass something for the average company to take it and you approve it, why do you have to vote to send the letter?
They actually, they made the decision that the EMS was going to do it, but they didn't vote for that.
Yes, they did.
Yeah, you voted to change it for the EMS.
We voted to have CDMS.
But I would not, yes, but I did not get the...
But why do you have to vote again then to send the letter?
The, they voted to have the EMS take care of Purdix. And there was going to be other discussion. There was discussion here with you guys, it's on the tape I gave you, that was going to get with, I believe, Fire Company too with it? Henry's going to talk to Fire Company or something like that?
I don't know.
I don't, I don't know, but...
In a nutshell, you, you got, you took care of the BLS side. The EMS company is going to respond to replace Marysville. The county requested that you attach the ALS response, who you want to...
That was today, yes.
That's what your vote was.
That was today.
That was today.
Correct.
The letter is saying that Duncan EMS and the ALS going out now.
Yes. Because I did not have authorization to send the letter.
I'm concerned for the residents... I'm concerned for the residents of Pen Township.
Well, just to make it known that I did, I did request a consensus of the supervisors, but the other two supervisors chose not to do a consensus and wait to this meeting.
They're running reporting orders.
Oh, okay. This was tabled last month. This is the one that Barbara Hamilton brought up about having renters report when, or having the owners of a rental property report when the people move in and out. This is the draft from PSAT.
Say this is a.
A draft I got from PSAT.
Do you have Rich look at this, or do we assume it came from the priest?
It came from PSAT, I'm sure their lawyers did. But I can send this to Rich if you want to table it again.
Why don't we fill in the blank and draft it up and send it to him?
Okay.
Yeah, so I'd like to make the motion to table it.
Yeah, table and send to Rich.
No, you have to make the motion, just table it.
Yeah, you have to do it to table.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we table the ordinance referencing to renters reporting until we get clarification from a solicitor.
We could prepare a draft.
Yeah, yeah.
Falling in the blank, making it specific to Pen Township.
Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
I second the motion, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Who's care?
I don't know if Henry told you, Brian, but we now have four people for the Economic Committee?
No, I didn't hear.
Okay. Yeah, we, we got four names. Henry's going to send out a letter to them, inviting them to come and basically discuss what the committee is to look at. Don't have a date for that or anything yet.
Who are the four people?
Mr. Clifford Lindgren, his son, I don't know his first name off the top of my head. Oh, thank you. John Gerner, and, oh, he works with Morrison. Thank you, Mike Rash. The Economic Committee for the Township. Just knew you got your tax collector's audit.
Do you have a motion to accept the audit?
Mm-hmm.
Do I got that motion?
Make the motion that we accept the 2015 Tax Collector's Audit.
I second the motion, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so move.
Okay. The regular audit, do you want to give me a motion to advertise that? The regular audit thing that goes in the paper?
I wonder if they re, did you present that last month?
Yeah.
Yes, did you motion that?
Oh, I gotta advertise it, that's money, yeah.
Make a motion that we advertise the audit that we.
Accepted last month.
Accepted, presented and accepted in our March meeting.
Yeah.
I second the motion, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, so move. Any other business, Ellen?
Uh, no, I don't.
Go ahead, motion adjourned.
I have a motion that we adjourn.
I second the motion, all those in favor, give their consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned, thank you.
Okay.